All right, good afternoon, everyone. It is 2:00 PM. This is the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. I'm Councilman John Bullock, Chair of the Committee. We're also joined by Vice Chair, Councilman Jesse Schleifer of the 5th District. Also joined by Councilmember Bill Henry of the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're quite welcome. Councilman Christopher Burnett of the 8th District. Councilman Z. Cohen of the 1st District. Also see that we have Councilwoman Shannon Snead of the 13th District. We're also joined, of course, by our staff to the Committee, Bill Crummett. See, we have representatives from the Council President's Office, Planning, DPW, Finance, Budget, also Department of Law, and Housing and Community Development. As you know by our agenda, we have quite a bit ahead of us today, so we're going to try to move as expeditiously as possible. That being said, the first bill on our agenda for today is City Council Bill 190325, Ordinance City Streets Closing, Air Rights, Area of A Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of the 4100 Block of Hillon Road. I'm looking at H.C. reports. Appears that everyone is favorable at this point. Do you want to provide opportunity for any of our agencies to provide any comment or let us know if you still stand by your bill reports? Also, I see the Mayor's Office of Home Services is also here with us as well, so thank you. That's going to be very important for our conversation later today. Does every agency stand by the report? Any comments at this point?
Oh, it's fine.
Hey, thank you, Elena.
DHCD stands by our report in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, this is Liam Davis with Baltimore City DOT. We also stand by our report, which is favorable.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no additional comments or questions from members of the Committee, I will entertain a motion at this point.
Move the bill favorably.
Move by Henry. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Cohen?
Yes, sir.
All right. Move by Henry, second by Cohen.
Before roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Indeed.
Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
Chairman Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Aye.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Some votes, any affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second read at the next meeting. The next two bills. Now, the next two bills on 362, 363 could be simultaneously checked as description.
Okay. That's what we'll do. I'm not sure if I recognize Councilman Dorsey of the 3rd District, but again, thank you for being here. Like the hand. All right.
Move by Cohen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So again, so scheduled for 201 and 202, respectively, our City Council Bill 190362, Ordinance City Streets Opening, a Variable With Alley Located Between Two 10-Foot Alleys Bound by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street, along with City Council Bill 190363. Closing, a Variable With Alley Located Between Two 10-Foot Alleys Bound by Boone Street, East 22nd, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street. Again, look at H.C. reports from Law, Planning, Housing, Community Development. These are all favorable. Are there any changes or additions to any of the reports, or do all the agencies stand by testimony thus far?
Chair, this is Liam Davis with DOT. We stand by our report, which is favorable.
Good afternoon. Stephanie Murdoch with the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our reports. No objection.
Elena DePietra, Law Department, we stand by our report.
All right. Perfect. Not hearing anything else. Are there any questions from members of the Committee? And if not, entertain a motion for the first bill that's in front of us for 190362.
Make a motion for the bill, Mr. Chair.
Okay, move by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Cohen. Move by Burnett, second by Cohen. We're ready for a vote.
Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
The board votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Seven-nothing, Mr. Chair. Second read at the next meeting. We can now move on to 363.
All right. I'll see to elevate the rule to panelist. Okay, so now, you'll entertain a motion for 190363. Is there a motion?
Move the bill favorable.
Move by Dorsey. Second by Cohen.
Roll call. Mr. Bullock.
Yes.
Chairman Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Which bill is this? Can you say the name of it also?
Oh, yes. City Council Bill 190363, Ordinance City Streets Closing, Variable With Alley Located Between Two 10-Foot Alleys Bound by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street.
Yes, thank you.
It's the closing bill for the opening that you just passed. It takes two bills. Okay. We ready for roll call?
Yep.
Chairman Bullock.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schleifer. Vice Chair Schleifer. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Aye.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
There's seven-nothing, Mr. Chair. Second read at the next meeting. Now, this is point of reference. The next three bills are franchises, and if we get to that point, they will need technical amendments to amend in the defeat after it comes back from the board estimates.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so first up, again, is going to be City Council Bill 190439, Ordinance Franchise Installation of Three Private Water Pipes in the Bed of the 1,000 Block of McCullough Street. Agency reports are favorable and no objection. Does every agency stand by the report? Is there any additional commentary at this point?
Mr. Chair, planning is favorable.
Thank you.
Liam Davis with DOT. We stand by our report, bill report, which is favorable.
Elena DePietra, Law Department, we stand by our report as well.
Bill Wells, HABC. We stand by our report is favorable.
Stephanie Murdoch, DHCD. We stand by our report in support.
All right. Thank you. I know with the technical amendment, do we need to do that now or can do that later on?
Well, when you finish, when you finish testimony, it'll be fine.
Perfect. All right. Not seeing additional testimony or comments. Is there a motion?
Move the bill favorable.
On 439.
I'm sorry? Yes, 439, yes.
Okay. Well, we need the technical amendment.
All right, so who moved the technical amendment? Was that Dorsey?
I had offered to move the bill. I forgot about the technical amendment, so I've offered to move the technical amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dorsey.
Do a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? All right.
Okay, motion.
Mr. Chair, I've moved the bill favorable as amended.
Thank Councilman Dorsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Henry. All right, ready?
Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
Members both. Seven-nothing, Chair. Second read at the next meeting. Want to come back from the board estimates.
All right, thank you. Moving right along, we have next City Council Bill 190458, Ordinance Franchise Light Pole Base Within the Right-of-Way of Quad Avenue, Interstate 95. Again, with H.C. reports of the first transportation, I see no objection. DOT, do you have any comments at this point?
Chair, Liam Davis with DOT. So just as a general background on this, the franchise will be between the city of Baltimore and the state of Maryland. We will be giving a portion of the right-of-way to the Maryland Transportation Authority on adjacent to Quad Avenue to install a light pole that will service I-95. The area, immediate area, is largely industrial, so impact to any residential properties should be minimal, and it should improve safety on Interstate 95 within Baltimore City.
Brief analysis. Any questions from members of the Committee?
Mr. Chair, do we have a technical amendment for this one as well?
This one and the next one will have the technical amendment for the franchise fee.
All right. Are any other questions from members of the Committee or comments from agencies? If not, entertain. Oh, yes, please go ahead.
Elena DePietra from the Law Department. Can you see if someone can elevate Vic Turbolo from the participants list to a panelist?
Okay, Vic, thank you.
Thank you.
Noting that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for the technical amendment?
So moved.
Move by Dorsey.
Second.
Second by Henry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. We'll entertain a motion.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
Okay, by Dorsey. Second by, was that Henry or Burnett?
Henry.
Henry, all right.
Move by Dorsey, second by Henry. Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
Chairman Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Seven-nothing, Mr. Chair. Second read upon return from the board estimates.
All right, thank you very much.
Now, we'll do the last.
All right. Our last franchise, one is also going to need a technical amendment, and again, that's City Council Bill 200573, Ordinance Franchise Electrical Vehicle Charging Stations. Again, we have favorable and no objections from our city agencies. Are there any other comments at this point?
Liam Davis from DOT, I just want to provide some background and also acknowledge a number of folks who are on this call. There's a multi-agency work group that was established, the Baltimore City Electronic Vehicle Work Group, comprised of representatives from Baltimore City DOT, Baltimore City Planning, Department of General Services, the Lull Department, and the Baltimore City Parking Authority. We've been working for a bit, just over a year, on crafting, working to craft the city's electronic vehicle policy. This franchise agreement with BGE comes after extensive work on crafting an MOU that we hope to utilize as a template moving forward with other electronic vehicle charging vendors. The MOU is available on LedgerStar for people to view. Part of the MOU includes an equity component so that we can ensure that the electronic vehicle chargers are dispersed across the city of Baltimore and not only in specific areas of the city. So this is a really great progressive, you know, opportunity to kind of start getting the city positioned to move away from vehicles that are fueled by fossil fuels. And also, there is the potential in the future for revenue in the form of an excise tax, but that is down the road and likely to be brought up in the next council term. So we stand by our bill report at DOT, which is favorable, and I will defer to some of the other members from the work groups who are also here if they have anything else to add.
This is Vic Turbolo from the City Law Department, so I was one of the ones on that task force, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about the legalities of what we're looking at both today and in the future, but Mr. Davis has said it well, so I'll just stand aside unless there are questions.
All right, thank you. I'll just say, again, I also appreciate, you know, from the environmental point of view, again, thinking about what this means moving forward, so I'm glad the folks are taking a real hard, strong look at this.
Stephanie Murdoch, DHCD. We also stand by our report in support, and I just wanted to thank Liam and the members of the task force for all of the hard work that they did around making sure that this can be equitably implemented in the city.
Right. Any additional comments for city agencies? I know we're also working with BGE as well. Any additional comments?
This is Pete Little. That's fine, go ahead, Pete. This is Pete Little, Executive Director with the Parking Authority. We stand by our report in support of this bill also. Thank you.
Thanks very much. One else at this point? Okay, if there are no other points, then we'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to.
Technical amendment by Councilman Dorsey is our second. Is there a second amendment? What's that?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. All right. All in favor? Anyone opposed or abstained? All right. Entertain motion for the bill.
Move the bill favorable as amended, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, second by, move by Dorsey, second by Henry. Okay, ready?
Chairman Bullock.
Aye.
The board votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Could you take that out, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
Members, he votes aye. Seven-nothing, Mr. Chair. Second read upon return from the board.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, move right along. Looks like the next two bills we can hear together. City Council Bill 200501, Ordinance City Streets Closing, Air Rights Over A Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of Rogers Alley, along with City Council Bill 200501, Ordinance City Streets Closing, Air Rights Over A Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of Rogers Alley. Again, looking at our H.C. reports, appear to be favorable. Are there any comments from our agencies? Do you folks stand by the reports?
This is Kyrie Wolf with BDC. Stand by our report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis with DOT, and I may have missed this bill report in the flurry of bill reports, and I do apologize, but we are favorable, and I will make sure that I get that submitted tonight if that has not been transmitted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Eric Tiso for Department of Planning, I can help out here. This is a proposal to allow for an overhead connection between two buildings for the Chesapeake Shakespeare Company Theater, so the ground level will still be accessible, and we are favorable.
Thank you.
Stephanie Murdoch, DHCD. We stand by our report. No objection.
Mr. Chair? I have to recuse myself on this bill. I'm a member of the board at Chesapeake Shakespeare.
That's right. Your costume again. You did some great work over there. All right, duly noted. All right. If there are no more comments or questions, we'll entertain a motion. City Council Bill 200501 first.
So moved.
Move by Cohen. Second by, was that Dorsey?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ready for vote?
We'll try one.
Yes.
Chair Bullock.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Cohen votes aye.
Yes.
Cohen votes aye. Mr. Henry. Member Cohen.
Yes, but I already voted.
Member Snead. Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Six votes in affirmative, no negatives. Want to abstain? We can go to second read at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving along, we will go to City Council Bill 200523, Ordinance Streets Closing A Portion of West 24th Street.
Did you do both?
I think they were due because it's the same one.
Okay. It's only one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for being clear. Okay, City Council Bill 200523, Ordinance City Streets Closing of West 24th Street. We have favorable H.C. reports. Are there any comments, additions, or changes to any reports?
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis to go with DOT, and I think this is similar to the last bill. I'm not seeing that the bill report was transmitted, and I do apologize for that. The background on this bill is it's a kind of a land swap that will allow DOT to do a bridge project immediately north of 24th Street. I believe it's the Remington Avenue Bridge.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the Committee?
It's actually a street bridge.
Thanks for your attention there.
Richard, my apologies.
It's all right.
Any additional comments from agencies?
Mr. Chair, planning is favorable.
Okay, we're going Murdoch and Tiso. All right.
All right, Stephanie Murdoch, Legislative Liaison for DHCD, and we stand by our report. We do not object.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, planning remains favorable.
All right. Not seeing additional questions or comments. We'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move the, we're moving the amendments, correct?
No.
I make a motion to move the bill, Mr. Chair.
Move by Burnett. And that's second by Cohen.
Okay. Roll call.
Yep.
Chair Bullock.
Yes.
The board votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye.
Yes.
Cohen votes aye. Mr. Henry.
If I was just called, I vote aye.
You were just called, you recorded as voting aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Seven-nothing, Mr. Chair. Second read at the next meeting.
All right, thank you so much. The next two bills we will hear simultaneously, City Council Bill 200574, Ordinance City Streets Opening, a 13-foot alley, and City Council Bill 200575, Ordinance City Streets Closing, a 13-foot alley and a 20-foot alley. Let's see, looking at the H.C. reports, looks like look to be favorable on both ends. Are there any comments from agencies or additions?
Stand by our report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis with DOT, so Council Bill, I believe we're on 574 and 75, correct?
That's correct.
So this is a companion bill to Council Bill 576, 25, 20-0576, which we heard Thursday together.
This committee, Liam.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying they're tied together, and they're also tied to a bill that has already passed and been signed by the mayor, which is Council Bill 190402, which will allow for a conditional use to allow for a parking lot to serve the Hohen Plagography Building in East Baltimore. Stand by our bill reports.
All right, always appreciate the additional context. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, this is Micah Thetts of the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report, and the report is favorable.
Thank you.
Stephanie Murdoch, DHCD. We stand by our reports, both in support.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the Planning Commission recommended favorable in their meeting of February 20th, and the companion parking lot was also approved by the Site Planner Committee.
Great, thank you. All right. If there are no additional points to raise, we'll entertain a motion first for Council
So moved.
Move by Burnett. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by, okay, ready for vote?
Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
The board votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Seven-nothing, Mr. Chair. Second read on Monday.
All right, thank you so much. Now, we'll entertain a motion for the follow-up on City Council Bill 200575. Is there a motion?
So moved, this is Snead.
Moved by Snead.
Seconded by Henry.
Seconded by Henry. All right, ready for vote?
Chair Bullock?
Aye.
Chair Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett? Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you so much, up in Dorsey. All right, we'll come back.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead?
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Try again, Mr. Dorsey? One last time. Mr. Dorsey? You want to record the vote at this point, or you want to wait a little longer?
Uh, we can record the vote, and if you can come back, you can come back.
Okay. Six votes in affirmative, no negatives, one pass. What was the, wait a minute. He's back on, let me see if I can reach him. Okay, now he's unmuted.
All right, councilman.
This is Dorsey. I'm welcome, Mr. Abstained, maybe we come back.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
All right, moving right along, there are two bills we will hear also simultaneously. That's City Council Bill 200577. Ordinance Streets Opening A 10-Foot Alley Along With City Council Bill 200578. Ordinance Streets Closing A 10-Foot Alley. Again, looking at our agency reports that appear to be favorable. Are there additional comments or testimony at this point?
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis with DOT. Just to give some additional context, the opening and closing of these alleys will help the Department of Housing and Community Development to make the parcels of land more attractive for future development. And we stand by our bill report, which is favorable.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments at this point?
Mr. Chair, I think Richard needs to re-mute.
Let's mute Dorsey for right now.
Okay.
Quickly, before he says something that he shouldn't.
All right, I need that laugh today. All right. So, are any other agency comments before we? Oh, sorry. And any agency reports before we entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, this bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission favorably in their meeting of August 20th.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdock, again, DHCD stands by both bill reports in support of the legislation.
And this is Hillary Ruley from Law, we stand by our reports as well.
Thank you. All right, then we'll, so we'll entertain a motion first for Council Bill 200577. Is there a motion?
Move the bill favorable.
Moved by Henry?
Second.
Seconded by Snead. Okay, ready for vote?
Chair Bullock?
Yes.
Chair Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye.
Yes. I don't know if you can hear me.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Should I call Councilman Dorsey at this one?
Let's try.
Councilman Dorsey votes yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to step away for a minute there.
Okay, would you like to vote on the last bill on 575? I left it open for you.
Dorsey votes yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Henry, back to five.
Aye.
Okay. Member Snead?
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Seven votes in affirmative, no negatives, second read on Monday. Also now, we can close out 575. Seven nothing, also second read on Monday.
All right. We'll.
Now we can move to 578 on vote.
Perfect. So again, is there a motion to move City Council Bill 200578?
So moved.
Seconded by Burnett. Ready for a vote?
So was Henry with a vote, second by Burnett?
Yes.
Okay. Chair Bullock?
Yes.
Chair Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead?
Yes.
Okay. Seven nothing, Mr. Chair, second read on Monday.
All right, thank you so much. Moving right along, we are now going to look at City Council Bill 20050564. Ordinance Urban Renewal and Middle East Amendment. I see that we have favorable reports, but I do want to provide an opportunity for Councilman Snead to have a word at this point, if you wish.
Mr. Chairman, we've always had. Uh, you don't notice from this passage, you have a message to, uh, we forward a dollar amendment to planning law. We moved our tactical.
I'm sorry, I can't understand what Richard's saying.
The sponsor sent an amendment. Wait, let me move myself in.
Okay, so again, just so the sponsor of the entered amendments today, there were also some amendments for planning and also the building technical amendments. Okay, thank you. Councilman Snead, did you have anything that you want to share at this point before we move on?
So I just got to say that this bill has been a long time coming. We've actually been working this thing for quite some time, just trying to get.
I'm sorry.
EBDI was involved, the last I had an employee start in the city of the bill. Um, and most of the amendments that are, are neighbors to one of your neighbors. Um, and so I, um.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, point of order. Can everybody who's not Councilwoman Snead please mute themselves? Because we're getting too much, I couldn't hear what she was saying.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Henry, good point. Yes, please proceed, Councilwoman.
So I just wanted to say thank you to Marcello who worked with us. This has been a long time coming. It feels like it's been close to two years since we started this bill. And we just tried to go to, of course, every community that it impacted, every business that was impacted with this. We worked closely with EBDI when it seemed like we were on our way wrapping this project. We gave them some time because they had a new employee start who they wanted to get input on this bill. And so we allowed that, which took us a little bit longer to get this out. So again, I just want to give kudos to Marcello who worked so hard trying to pull different communities together and merchants together on the main street. So the amendments that's included in these bills are just neighbors who want to be removed. Those are the bills that I am introducing. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember, appreciate the additional information, very helpful. Are there any agencies that also want to chime in at this point?
Hillary Ruley from the Law Department, we stand by our report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Councilwoman Snead. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to say that Planning Commission supported this and voted favorable on August 20th, 2020, at its hearing. And thank you again to Councilwoman Snead for all of her work on this.
Thank you. And the other agency?
Murphy, DHCD, we stand by our report in support of the bill.
Thank you.
Davis, DOT, we stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Mr. Chairman, this is Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We stand by our report in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So do you want to move, entertain a motion to move the amendment, Councilman Snead?
I moved amendment, the amendments. Can I just, I'll move my amendment.
All right, is there a second?
Second, thank you. Thank you, muted everybody, thank you.
All right, so moved by Snead, seconded by Dorsey?
It's Snead, I'm on it.
Snead amendment. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Stained. All right. All right, is there, so I'd like to move the bills amended, favorables amended?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Snead, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Henry. Ready for a vote? Yes.
Yes.
If Richard is calling out the roll, I can't hear anything.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilman, okay. Councilman Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead?
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Seven nothing, Mr. Chair, we can go to second read at the next meeting.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving right along, we have next City Council Bill 200610. Ordinance Repeal, Riceford Town Plaza Transit Station Urban Renewal Area Plan. There are favorable reports from each of, from the agencies that are listed, and this is also sponsored by Vice Chair Schleifer. So one wanted to hear both from Schleifer, but also any agency reports at this point.
Do you want to hear it from first?
Why don't you go ahead, Councilman?
All right, so the purpose of this repeal is we were looking over some things, and in connection to a hearing we had this morning in the Land Use Committee regarding having an adult, an adult daycare facility to be built in the district. Without repealing this, it made it very difficult to do so. And then speaking with the Community Association and speaking with neighboring businesses, they felt that it was time also to repeal, and so that's what we're looking to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thanks for being concise as well. Agency reports, everybody stand by the report?
Law stands by its report.
Perfect.
Planning is favorable?
DHCD has no objection?
DOT stands by its bill report, which is no objection as well.
The Department of Public Works is here in support of the bill.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Councilman Hacka represents, do you want to hear from her?
Sorry?
Councilman Hacka, you don't, let me get along. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Hacker. Oh. This is, okay. If she's not here.
I'm sorry, I was muted, I apologize. Caroline Hacker, Rosenberg, Martin Greenberg, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As Councilman Schleifer indicated, this bill was introduced in connection with another bill to rezone a property on Menlo Drive this morning. It was heard by the Land Use Committee. And, you know, as we were working on that project, we realized that the property that we were focused on was located within this urban renewal plan, and that the plan had really become aggravated and superseded by the new zoning code when it became effective in 2017. And when we approached Councilman Schleifer, he graciously offered to help us with the community associations. And, you know, we worked with everyone, and everyone agreed that it was time that this should be repealed. So we thank him for his support, and we hope that the committee will vote to repeal this urban renewal plan. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to move the bill favorable.
Okay, move up Vice Chair Schleifer, is there a second?
Snead, second Snead.
Seconded by Snead. All right, ready for a vote?
Chair Bullock?
Yes.
Chair Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen, aye. Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Henry, aye. Member Snead?
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Chair, seven votes in affirmative, no negatives, we can go to second read at the next meeting.
Right, thank you very much.
One pace.
And I, please.
The next meeting scheduled for 2:45.
I'm pleased to say that we are on time today and moving right along. But also, before we get this next resolution, City Council 200250. Resolution paying DPW as much as they deserve. I do want to give special note to Vice Chair Schleifer and also committee member Councilman Cohen for their hard work and advocacy on behalf of our sanitation workers who were doing so much in the heavy lifting in this city.
250R.
250R, yes. So again, I do want to, you know, make sure that, you know, we, you know, really thank you for this leadership, and do want to hear from you as we go forward. So Vice Chair Schleifer and Councilman Cohen, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so I want to start off by giving just a short outline of what got us to where we are today. Okay? And so on 8/31, as we know, recycling had been suspended and drop-off locations were opened. This is all due to shortages that we were experiencing, which was, as we all know, is not a new issue as we've had hearings about this for a while now. And on 9/15, at our hearing, I called on the union and the mayor's office to provide, to have a conversation, come to the table, let's talk about a raise for these workers, to attract the workers to stay, and also to attract new workers to join this line of work that we so desperately need, and that is also so tiring and taxing on folks. On 9/18, I sent the letter directly to the mayor requesting a minimum of a $4-an-hour increase for these workers. On 9/21, this resolution that we're hearing today was introduced with a lot of support from the City Council, a lot of co-sponsors. So thank you to everybody who joined on that. We certainly made it clear that the City Council stands behind our solid waste workers and want to see them compensated accordingly. On 9/25, Councilman Cohen and I sent the letter to the mayor suggesting that he use CARES Act money to give a $5,000 hazard payment to each DPW solid waste employee. The $5,000 represented approximately a $4-an-hour increase for approximately 1,250 hours that workers at the time had worked from the start of the pandemic. On October 6th, we heard from, from watching the news, WBAL put out that the mayor's office was sent a statement saying that the mayor commissioned a study in January on DPW's workers' compensation, and the mayor looks forward to reviewing the study and taking appropriate steps moving forward. And, you know, so about a month and a half and countless correspondence, finally, that was the first response that we heard. Then on October 6th. On October 6th, we, you know, we. Uh, then on October sixth, um, on October sixth, uh, we, um, you know, we, we had another recall action, a call to action to, um, to try to get, uh, these workers the compensation that they deserve. Um, and then on October twenty-eighth, uh, there was a statement from the mayor's office that the mayor had commissioned a study, which resulted in, in almost four percent wage increase for solid waste workers, uh, in the beginning of this year. And, um, and then on eleven-four, we see the Board of Estimates' agenda, uh, to raise all, uh, these thirty-seven temporary workers, uh, to become permanent workers, which, um, which we applaud that, and also a five hundred dollar bonus, uh, which I guess I will ask a couple of questions about that. Um, so the, um, now that we have an outline, I just want to start off by saying thank you to the mayor for taking our temporary workers and making them permanent. Um, and I also want to say you're welcome to ask me, who now has thirty-seven new members as a result of these efforts. Um, I do applaud the mayor, uh, for taking some action on this, even as we are in the last weeks of the term. Uh, this is certainly a, an important issue, uh, that we're facing the consequences every day, now that our curbside collection went from twice a week down to once a week, and so I, I do thank him for that. Uh, but unfortunately, we still have not heard, um, from the mayor's office directly. Um, and so the only information that we've had is from watching the news or reading the Board of Estimates' agenda. So there's still some outstanding questions. Um, and so before we go into questions, I'd like to, uh, if it's okay with the chair, just turn it over to Councilman Cohen, um, if he'd like to say a few words.
Absolutely. Please do.
Uh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilman Schleifer. Um, really do appreciate your leadership and partnership in this effort. Um, the only things I would add is, you know, this, the job of being a sanitation worker, whether it's recycling or trash pickup, is classified as one of the top five most dangerous jobs in the United States. Uh, these are folks who frequently suffer injuries to their person. Uh, these are folks who, as we all know, suffered an enormous amount of COVID-19 infection. Um, we literally had to shut down an entire site, uh, over on the east side. Uh, and so this is a workforce that works extremely hard. And when Councilman Schleifer and I went and visited, uh, some of the pickup sites, we heard some really tough stories from workers who, um, you know, one of whom had recently passed away after a shift. Uh, one of whom described having his marriage fail because of the stress of the job and just not making enough money. Several of whom told us that they were working multiple jobs while also trying to, uh, ride the back of a truck. And so I think it is incumbent on us as a city to pay all of our essential workers, but especially folks who are literally risking life and limb to get our trash picked up, a just livable wage. Um, I join my colleague in thanking Mayor Young, uh, for making this move. I think that what we've learned from research and from hearing from our folks is that having a temporary workforce that has no health insurance or other benefits is simply unacceptable. Paying people eleven bucks an hour to do this kind of work is unacceptable. And so again, we're glad to see the movement that's been made, and we will continue to push for more for our workers, as well as for the resumption of curbside recycling pickup. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, and thank you both so much. You know, we just want to, you know, make a, a moment, um, historical point here. You know, a lot of people, you know, reference, you know, Dr. King, and one of the things that a lot of folks don't recognize is that his last action, uh, was to be on the side of sanitation workers in, in Memphis, uh, thinking about the conditions they were facing and, and the dignity of all work, and that's something you have to keep in mind. I also see that we're joined, uh, by John Chalmers with, um, uh, Bureau of Solid Waste. Uh, Mr. Chalmers, would you like to say anything at this point?
Uh, not at this point. Thank you for, uh, for having me join, but no, not at this point. I think, uh, Councilman, uh, Yitsi Schleifer and Councilman Zico and, uh, wrapped it up nicely.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. Are there any other, uh, comments from members of the committee or any agencies who represented?
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Councilman Dorsey.
My video is not working for some reason. I don't know what's going on. Um, thank you. I just, I too want to just, uh, recognize the importance of elevating these workers, uh, the, the seasonal maintenance workers. Um, as many of you will probably recall, this is something that I have brought up in literally every budget hearing, every year, uh, since we've been on the council. Um, and dug deeply into, um, uh, in particular, looking at what the data show about how long, uh, seasonal maintenance employees are typically kept on before being dismissed, um, and not made into full-time employees. That there is a, uh, there's a pattern, uh, of, of keeping seasonal workers on for the full length of time that the city is allowed to keep them on without making them full-time employees, and then dismissing them at the very last minute and never making them full-time employees. And so I just want to acknowledge that it is a significant departure from the norm to be, um, elevating this many seasonal workers, um, uh, certainly at once, but really even at all. Um, it is not the norm. And so, um, you know, as somebody who has advocated for this for literally the last four years, uh, that is heartening to me. Um, and then, and then again, in the bigger picture here, also, as somebody who voted in favor of the fifteen dollar hour minimum wage, of course, I want to see workers making, um, you know, an adequate wage and think it should never have come to having to elevate people in a position in order to get them more money. I don't think it should have to come to elevating them in position. They should be earning that money in the first place, regardless of what their job is. It shouldn't have to be a question of how hard or how dangerous the job is. Everybody should be making that amount, uh, that, that amount of money. There shouldn't be any condition placed on that whatsoever. Um, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional, uh, comments at this point? If not, oh, yes, please, uh, Vice Chair Schleifer.
So I mean, also, uh, the, one of the, the union was included in the resolution. So if they're here, I think we should give an opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. If there's anyone who was representing, um, we'd love to hear from you before we move on.
All right. Anybody wants to speak can raise your hand and I'll put you on.
All right. Well, this thing done. Uh, Chairman, you might have asked a couple of questions.
Uh, sure. And, but I know we're getting a little, uh, tight on time as well, but please go ahead.
All right. So I will keep it, uh, very short. There's a couple of, just a couple of specific questions. Um, is anybody from finance here?
Who's not on?
Can I see?
I'm on. I'm on. This is Bob sending me. I'm, I'm on.
Hey, Bob. Thank you for being here. Um, on October twenty-eighth, the mayor said, uh, in his statement that they're getting, uh, that they got close to a four percent raise, uh, in the beginning of the year. In the finance department's, uh, report on this bill, it says twenty-twenty was a two percent raise. Uh, whose numbers are wrong?
So in the, yeah, in the twenty-twenty budget, um, which is last year's budget, the ASME negotiated a two percent increase. Um, also during that time, uh, they had, in part of the contract was we had worked out additional increases for, um, two hard-to-fill classifications, so CDL drivers and laborers. So those employees got additional bumps in their pay during that contract. So, um, I'm assuming where he's getting the four percent is he's combining the two percent plus those additional, um, those additional dollars for those specific positions.
So that, so that wasn't across, that wasn't across the board on all these? You're saying these are just ones that we needed to fill?
The, yeah, so the, the, the pay increase that I referred to, yeah, applied, applied to everybody, the two percent. But then for those specific classifications, those were ones that were, you know, that over time we had, we had realized that are a little bit harder to fill, um, and so those were targeted specifically.
Okay. And, um, is HR on this call also? Is there anybody from HR? No. All right. So I'll just ask my other question. Um, this five hundred dollar, uh, bonus, is that also going to be across the board for every, uh, solid waste employee?
So, um, the, so the five, the five hundred dollar, um, piece that goes to all, um, it's all sanitation workers and drivers at DPW. So, um, it's most, if not all, I believe. I'm not sure. Does DPW know if that's everybody in the, in solid waste?
So to the best of my knowledge, that's, you know, as the BOE letter stated, a memo stated, that's going to be for the solid waste workers, solid waste drivers, and solid waste leads. So it's just for the curbside collection operation only. To the best of my knowledge.
Hi. This is Matt Beck with the mayor's office. Uh, I did want to point out, it does appear that, uh, Kim Humphrey from, uh, Department of Human Resources is, uh, on the call, but as an attendee, so I, I don't know if Richard can elevate. She might have anything to add, but, uh, as Mr. Chalmers did just, um, I, I, his answer is complete, but just in case, if you want to hear from the HR.
All right. Give us a second.
Kimboy Humph, okay. Okay, she's on.
All right. Ms. Humphrey? Believe you're unmuted. Oh, she's still muted. Yes.
Hi. I couldn't, I couldn't unmute. Sorry about that. It's Kim Humphrey, DHR. So, um, yes, it is, it's, it's, uh, directed towards specific, uh, workers, not across the board. So it, there was a one-time five hundred dollar bonus to solid waste drivers, um, and lead solid waste employees. Uh, this was, yeah. So this is as a result of the COVID-19, you know, increases in the workload.
All right. Thank, thank you for that confirmation.
So, okay. Uh, and one, one last question I have about that, because I mean, there's still, um, there's certainly still some, uh, raises that, uh, need to be looked at moving forward, you know, when it comes to the permanent workers, that, that still is something that needs to be addressed. Um, the raises that, uh, were put in place in the beginning of the year, you know, we've looked at, we have the standard two to four percent year-over-year. Um, the, this study that's done on that, um, in your report, it indicates that that was a part of your routine functions and studies of classifications of, of city positions. Was, was that what was done, or was there a specific, um, a specific report that was done exclusively for this specific reason?
I mean, the, there, there's a general review, so it included these workers in this classification.
Gotcha. Okay. And, and that's what was provided to me. So I was just making sure that, that there wasn't actually any other requested review that had been done and was actually completed that, uh, was not provided to the council. So this is just a standard review of, um, of classifications across the city?
Yes, but it did include the targeted employees.
Okay. All right. And just one last comment, Mr. Chair, and then I'll, I'll conclude, because you've been doing so great on time. I don't want to ruin it for you. Um, one of the key things we spoke about at, at last hearing, and I don't know who needs to hear this, but whoever does will hear it, and, uh, if they're not the right person, they'll take it back to the agency. Uh, but the communication at DPW, uh, the outward communication must improve. Um, there's so much misinformation out there. Uh, there's a lot of things changing by the minute. Uh, the communication to the citizens of Baltimore, um, and to the council is terrible. Um, I hear, uh, I heard from constituents, um, that recycling was going to be delayed again, um, without ever hearing it from DPW communications. And so, uh, there needs to be, uh, a better communications coming out of DPW. Uh, you guys run important functions that affect every single person in the city. Um, and so that is something that I'll ask, that is communicated to the council on a timely basis. Um, and I will make one specific request to DPW, and I'll follow up on this to the director if he's not on this call. But perhaps, uh, DPW Communications Department, uh, should have monthly town halls, virtual town halls, uh, with the citizens to get questions answered, uh, because we, as council members, receive questions every day regarding DPW, whether it's water billing, whether it's trash collection, recycling, whatever it may be. Um, and if the information's not being given to us, then you need to give the information to, to the citizens. And so that, that is a request that I have, um, is that DPW start, uh, communicating, uh, to the citizens of Baltimore and having, uh, monthly, at least monthly town halls that allow the citizens to ask questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Schleifer. Um, at this, at this point, uh, we'll entertain a motion, um, on the, on the resolution.
I'd like to move it favorable.
Second.
All right. Moved by, uh, by Schleifer, seconded by Cohen. Ready for a vote?
Chair Baller.
Yes.
The ball votes, uh, Vice Chair Schleifer. Vice Chair Schleifer votes, uh, Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes, uh, Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Stone vote, uh, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Dorsey votes, uh.
Yes.
The Henry votes, uh, Member Snee.
Yes.
The Chair votes in affirmative, no negatives. Second read at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, the next item, um, on our agenda is City Council Bill two zero zero six two five, ordinance landlord tenant right to counsel in eviction cases. Um, as many of you know, just given where we are, uh, health-wise, economically, in our city and our country, this is a very timely subject. We know there are a number of folks who are, uh, who are affected by this issue. And so we do want to provide opportunity from our agencies and also from the public to chime in. Also, we are joined, uh, by both, uh, Council President Scott and, uh, City State Attorney Marilyn Mosby, who would also, um, like to, uh, give some comments as well. Uh, so I, I know we're working on, um, getting, um, Ms. Mosby elevated to being a panelist. It does appear that, um, Council President Scott is already elevated. So at this point, uh, Mr. President, would you like to go ahead and give, uh, testimony?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the committee for hearing this important, uh, piece of legislation today. Uh, as the chair said, this legislation is to establish a right to counsel program which will provide counsel for tenants in certain matters involving eviction. Uh, we know COVID-19 has, uh, highlighted and further highlighted the need for housing stability, uh, uh, in our city. This will improve the ability for residents to achieve, uh, outcomes that are more fair, more favorable in landlord dispute. We know that, uh, during a pandemic is when we have to have people be represented in the best way. But this was an issue that we should have been thinking about prior to COVID-19. We know that when people show up to court with representation, they achieve outcomes that are more fair and equitable. That's what this piece of legislation is about, equitable outcomes to help us create and, uh, create and sustain, uh, housing stability in our city. This is a proven cost-effective way to support people who rent in the city of Baltimore and to prevent evictions, uh, something that we want to prevent at all times, but especially when we're dealing with a global pandemic and the economic fallout of which we have not seen in a generation. I just kindly, uh, thank, uh, the committee for hearing this bill today. I know that we'll be working through some amendments that Director Young will go through, but would love to see this piece of legislation move forward so that we can join other jurisdictions in being able to provide so that we can join other jurisdictions in being able to provide, uh, fair right to counsel for our renters.
Well, well, first, again, uh, Mr. President, I want to thank you for, uh, your leadership and sponsoring this bill, and as you mentioned, we talked about legal representation, uh, I think it's also very appropriate that we have our City State's Attorney, uh, Marilyn Mosby, joining us as well, so, uh, Ms. Mosby, please go ahead with your testimony, very much appreciated.
Councilman, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, good afternoon.
Can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, alright, um, so first and foremost, I want to say to the members of the committee, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to testify on this legislation that would provide right to counsel to individuals facing eviction, um, some may wonder why evictions or what that has to do with the Office of the State's Attorney overall, but I can tell you that as a top prosecutor in a city that's known for violent crime, public safety and equal justice is paramount, but I also think that it's incredibly important to point out that according to Baltimore Renters United, Baltimore City also has one of the highest eviction rates in the nation, recognizing that there is a direct sort of correlation between public safety and the socioeconomic challenges that persist in our city, there's also a long documented correlated link between the lack of housing and public safety, where if we were to overlay a map of where crime occurs with a map where evictions occur, the connection between public safety and housing would be undeniable, um, at the heart of the battle for a right to counsel in eviction proceedings in Baltimore is the innate desire that people have for safe and secure housing in our city, we have seen during the COVID-19 crisis and pandemic, the struggles that homeless people in our city have had in acquiring shelter during a global pandemic, with city officials and local nonprofits stepping in to provide hotels and other accommodations to this vulnerable population, yet even before COVID-19, an Able Foundation study underscored the implications of evictions for our city, the authors state that Baltimore City is likely to face a rising wave of eviction actions due to COVID-19 with no adequate relief on the horizon, the city has 125,000 renter households, but annually has almost 140,000 eviction case violence resulting in approximately 70,000 eviction warrants and 6,500 evictions, an eviction rate almost two and a half times that of the national average, let me be very clear that this looming eviction crisis will likely have a negative impact on crime, public safety, my office, and all of our communities, which is why the authors of that study believe that enacting a right to counsel law will help mitigate the effects of any eviction crisis that we may potentially face in the city. Socioeconomic inequality often leads to crimes of poverty that often have nothing to do with public safety, which is why my office, after consulting with public health experts nationally, has declined to prosecute trespassing and drug possession and rogue and vagabond and other offenses that disproportionately criminalize the poor, the homeless, and people of color in our city, we also recognize, and what we know to be true, is that when someone is saddled with a criminal record, it can become very hard, if not impossible, to find housing, and as such, individual, individuals enter a vicious sort of cycle, they commit a crime out of economic desperation, are subsequently arrested and convicted, and then they have a criminal record, they serve their time, and they get out to try to rehabilitate themselves and put their lives back on track, only to be denied access to housing and employment and other benefits as they try and reintegrate into society, such barriers, as I testified to in, in Congress, are a path to recidivism and more crime in our city, as those individuals are shut out of a regular society and turn back to the life that they ultimately know. In addition to utilizing criminal records to screen potential tenants, several studies opine that individuals are also evicted because of a criminal record, what's worse is that according to a 2019 Princeton University study, landlords are often run inaccurate criminal background checks on tenant, on tenants, which according to Matthew Desmond, head of the eviction lab, are more likely to harm the marginalized communities who are most at risk of experiencing an eviction in the first place, particularly low-income black and Latino women, each of us representing, and I say each of us, meaning in our, our respective capacities, representing a majority black city, we must consider such demographics in our analysis of the bill that's being proposed, because it's clear that without access to counsel to fight back against these inaccuracies, many of the constituents that we represent end up on the streets, and although Baltimore City provides, and I must say, they provide some protections for public housing for private landlords, and even in some public housing cases, tenants are often unaware of their rights, having access to an attorney, as the bill is proposing, would help raise awareness of the rights of that person being threatened with eviction, when in fact, according to Baltimore Renters United, a 2016 survey of Baltimore renters showed that 80% of tenants had a legitimate defense to their eviction, but only 8% were successful because they did not have a right to counsel and representation, the link between housing and public safety goes way beyond erroneous sort of background checks, we've all witnessed the challenges in our educational system that often lead to negative outcomes in the criminal justice system, but what is even more apparent is how poor housing is also a factor that leads to involvement in the criminal justice system for the young people in our city and throughout this country, thousands of children end up in the foster care system every year in this country because their parents are evicted, children in the foster care have a higher chance of arrest and incarceration, one study found that 34% of children who left foster care at the age of 17 or 18 have been arrested by 19, as the city's lead prosecutor, I have a responsibility to speak out, to address the root causes as to why crimes take place in our city, and to speak in favor of proposals that will enhance public safety, it is my firm belief that passage of this bill will not only mitigate the eviction crisis that is prospectively looming, but this law will ensure stable housing, which studies have shown is a key factor in lowering recidivism and crime generally, I urge the passage of this bill and this law because I believe that it will make our city safer, more secure, and much more humane, thank you.
Well, th- thank you, uh, Ms. Mosby, a couple of things I just want to, you know, chime in on, you know, you really give the comprehensive approach to the fact that, you know, housing, not only is it a human right, but it's also connected to poverty, which is also connected to crime, and these are cycles that repeat themselves if we don't attack it, and so again, I appreciate you making those comments, again, you know, we're, we're, we're parents, and we think about what it means to have a steady place for our children to live, and what it means for education, um, but also just thinking about some of the things that are, that are renters and folks are dealing with when housing's unstable, so again, we appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule, um, to, to speak to this issue today, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, appreciate your leadership.
Thank you, and again, thank you, uh, you know, Council, uh, Council President Scott, um, also, um, want to, uh, uh, look at some of the agency reports, I know, um, we have, um, our agencies represented, I don't know if anybody wants to chime in, as well as any members of the committee at this point, but I do want to hear from, um, some of our members as well.
Mr. Chair.
Chime in when you have a moment.
Yes, uh, so, 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 um, Councilman Dorsey, and then, um, Law Department Elena, please.
Yeah, just, um, as we begin to hear agency reports, I wanted to just acknowledge, I received some amendments from the Council President's office earlier, and hopefully those amendments are, have been distributed and are going to be reflected in, uh, the comments from the various agencies, um, as they give their reports, just making a note.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for, for raising that, um, Elena, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Elena DePietra from, from the Law Department, um, we just, the Law Department wanted to note that, you know, for all the reasons that have been testified to, you know, by, by the President, President Scott, and, um, State's Attorney Mosby, um, the Law Department supports the, the concept of the bill and finds no legal impediment to the passage of a, of a right to counsel, um, legislation, uh, we did however identify just a few procedural matters that we think, um, need to be, uh, attended to before we can approve it for formal legal sufficiency, I have talked with Kalen and the President's office, and we have, um, we've gone through with Law Department's suggestions, and I think we are in agreement, and, um, so those amendments will be offered, and that should, um, solve any other procedural issues that might come up with the bill.
Thank you for adding that clarity, uh, very helpful and appreciated.
You're welcome.
Alright, um, I see we also have, um, housing, and housing, any, any comments at this point?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department, um, also joined by Katie Byrne, our Assistant Deputy Commissioner for Permits and Code Enforcement, uh, Steve James, Deputy Commissioner for Research and Consolidated Planning, and maybe even Jason Hessler, uh, who is our Deputy Commissioner of Permits and Litigation, also, um, Alice Kennedy, I believe, is, has called in as well, our, our Acting Commissioner. I just wanted to start by saying that we do support the intent of this legislation, uh, we've provided a bill report, um, to the members of the committee, as well as some draft amendments, um, I, we've had a lot of discussions around this bill, and certainly during these difficult times and, and impending eviction crisis, a right to counsel is extremely important, um, however, uh, in review of this bill, it has raised a number of, of questions for us, and I'm just going to get into those and some of our amendments here, and one of those questions is, um, should this be done at the state level rather than just here in Baltimore City, um, that's not for us to answer today, but, you know, I believe the advocates are, you know, committed to doing this work at the state level as well, um, also, um, if, is DHCD the right agency to implement this legislation, um, this legislation, uh, will touch upon a lot of different agencies and, uh, commissions, like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission, um, designated nonprofit organizations that provide this advocacy, um, and representation, the Department of Finance, the Housing Authority of Baltimore, the Sheriff's Office, and potentially even, uh, groups like the Health Department or the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, who all touch people as they're, they're in the, uh, eviction pipeline, so to speak, so the First Amendment, um, that I wanted to, uh, bring to everyone's attention, this is going to be on page five of the bill, um, and basically, uh, we are having a little bit of a hard time with the words, uh, the commissioner shall ensure that all covered individuals, uh, receive legal representation, uh, we have offered a amendment to propose that all individuals are referred to, uh, referred to for legal representation, uh, Law Department also has a, a similar amendment adjusting the, uh, word, uh, receive to are offered, so wanting to make that clear because it's not actually DHCD who's providing the legal representation, we are providing the referrals to the nonprofit organizations, um, the Second Amendment, um, is around the, well, it's not a amendment, but it is a comment around the appropriations of funds, um, as this bill is subject to an annual appropriation, we certainly have concerns about i- if that is what the program is actually going to cost, and the, if it's going to be funded at a continuous level from year to year, once we prop this program up, are we going to be able to, to sustain it and meet the expectations, um, additionally, on page, uh, five, uh, this is line 13, and this is to, uh, add the words seek to for the, um, requirement that the commissioner shall prioritize the provision of legal representation, uh, we'd certainly, uh, like to, um, but the challenge is with so many eviction cases coming in, uh, on a daily basis, it really would be difficult to try to prioritize more than just a day's worth of cases because subsequently an individual could come in and, uh, have a greater need, so to speak, so we wanted to bring some clarity to that, um, on page five of the bill, line 23, uh, we also want to make it clear that the commissioner, uh, and this is around the education piece, we wanted to make it clear that the commissioner may engage designated community groups, um, and, and amend the word including on line 25 to through activities such as, and then it has the, uh, five bullet points below, um, so these are ultimately going, activities that are going to be carried out by the non, designated nonprofit organizations, I'm almost there, okay, on page six of the bill, um, we have an amendment to strike the August 31st deadline and replace it with November 1st, and on page seven in line two, to strike the September 30th deadline and replace it with December 1st to give us additional time to compile the reporting requirements, okay, amendment number five is on page seven of the bill, and that is to replace the word shall with may, um, this is around conducting a hearing on the report required by the, uh, legislation, as you know, the City Council can call for a hearing at, at any time to get updates on a variety of programs, so we think this clarifying legislation is in order, and then finally, on page nine of the bill, um, striking the immediate enactment date and replacing it with a 120-day enactment period, we really feel in our conversations with other agencies that we need time to figure out what the actual fiscal implications of this legislation are going to be, um, it was estimated, um, that it would be around 5.7 million just for the representation aspects, but that does not include the, um, administrative functions that we would need to perform and possibly bring on a tax, um, a, um, budsman to perform the, the tracking and referral roles, uh, additional staff could be needed as well, so those are the majority of our concerns, I want to be respectful of everybody's time, but, um, I would if, if Katie or, um, Alice or Steve wanted to add anything else to the conversation, um, DHCD touches the eviction process in, in many different ways, we currently fund a number of nonprofits through our CDBG grants that are providing this council, and then through a one-time COVID appropriation, we were able to e- expand the funding to those programs, also, our, um, code enforcement, uh, folks also have interactions with both tenants and landlords, um, around things such as illegal lockouts, um, we pursue, uh, but code by outstanding code violations, sometimes against tenants, sometimes against landlords, um, or evictions that may result, um, uh, result in eviction because of the state nuisance drug statute, so, um, that's, that's what I have so far, I would appreciate a consideration of the time needed to convene a, a study group or a task force so that we can work with these nonprofits and understand better how much funding they would need to support, uh, increased load.
Well, thank you for being thorough as always, um, are there any questions from members of the committee or additional commentary on, on those proposed amendments at this point?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Henry, please.
Um, just, uh, very, I'm sorry if I missed this in Ms. Murdock's, uh, recitation, have you already had, um, a conversation with the Council President's office and gone over all of these points?
We met with the Council President's office as well as, um, the Public Justice Center to discuss these points, uh, it sounded like the Council President's office would be open to, uh, a delayed enactment date, um, so as far as the other amendments, uh, they were all, uh, discussed at our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Okay, any additional commentary from other agencies in addition, and aside from, uh, housing?
Hi, Chairperson Bullock, this is Mara James from Department of Finance.
Yes, yes, please.
Um, so Mara James, representing the Department of Finance, um, want to start by saying that finance, um, opposes this legislation, but under, but appreciates the intent and is supportive of looking into this process further, um, as Stephanie mentioned, the city recognizes that eviction prevention is very important, and has committed $20 million of CARES funding to eviction prevention, um, as well, which is one-time funding, as well as some of the CEBG's specific money, um, so, in that, though, we do recognize that we're also in a tough budget situation as a city, we had to close fiscal 20 with a $14 million deficit, and as you know, write down revenues for fiscal 21 by $103 million, and we are just now in the process of beginning the fiscal 22 budget process and figuring out what possible impact there could be to this, um, as Stephanie also mentioned, there was this study by Stout for the Public Justice Center that stated that the cost would be about 5.7 million, um, so to meet that need, we would have to figure out reductions in other areas of the budget that could be reductions or cuts for other important services, um... So to meet that need, we would have to figure out reductions in other areas of the budget that could be reductions or cuts for other important services that are in this similar area around code enforcement or possibly temporary sheltering. And while there may be reductions in those areas as a result of this program from reduced disruptive displacement, those savings, as you could present those, are not something that we can necessarily guarantee or put into our budget immediately. We'd have to take time to really see that come in. So it's not that we can necessarily add 5.7 million in one area and reduce it in another and ensure that that was equal. The other thing to note is that we do think it would be beneficial to have this conversation and we've been working with HCD, with MOHS, and with HABC to figure out how a program like this could work and have that be part of the budget process. That's a time when agencies can really come together and present ideas for new programs and make sure that we are putting it as part of a strategic and prioritization of programs for the city. So those are just a few points we wanted to make. We recognize that this legislation states that it's dependent on an appropriation, which is helpful, but as DHCD stated, that there could be some concerns around that. So I just wanted to say that we are, we believe that there could be definitely a benefit, certainly for our residents and for the city and the budget from doing this, and it would be a good investment to take some time to work with our partner agencies to figure that out. It's just at this point in time, we're opposed to the bill as written.
Thank you for taking a look at it and then providing those comments. Are there any questions from Kennedy members to finance? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, again, thank you. I know you'll be around for a minute. Anyone else who wants to chime in at this point?
Yes, Chair Bullock, this is Bill Wells from the Housing Authority of Baltimore City.
Yes, thank you.
So the Housing Authority also submitted a bill report and recognizes the intended impact of the bill and supports that impact. We had a couple of, or a handful of amendments that we suggested, but also wanted to point out some places where we sought more clarity in the way things were described. The first was being an agency that deals primarily with low-income renters, both through the Housing Choice Voucher Program and also through public housing and the variety of privately managed housing in Baltimore City. The, there's, we didn't see a provision that specifically targeted low-income residents. For instance, this would provide counsel to someone paying $3,000 a month in rent or who had a substantial income. So there's no differentiation there. We wanted to point that out because we think that channeling the city's resources to the most impacted residents, as the state's attorney was pointing out at the beginning, is an important aspect. In addition, there are some questions that we have about at what point someone would be entitled to access to an attorney under this provision. There are a variety of administrative processes internal at the Housing Authority that could be considered within the language in this bill. And so we would seek more clarity about where that would be. Are we talking about just failure to pay cases that would traditionally go through, you know, what's otherwise known as rent court? Does this also involve hearings about the breach of a voucher agreement that is not in and of itself, you know, a termination of the lease because the Housing Authority doesn't hold the lease for a voucher tenant, but it would be a termination of the landlord's portion of the rental assistance, which could then logically, you know, be assumed would lead to the tenant not being able to pay that rent? So the specific areas that we wanted to call out also so were about who would be covered. The covered individuals include any tenant in a building owned, operated, or managed by the Housing Authority of Baltimore or any other federal, state, or privately subsidized property, which would include all of our other partners. We thought that the specificity would be helpful. In addition, the, there's a provision.
Bill, I think your sound dropped off for a second. If you could repeat what you just said.
Sure. Title 7, I, 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 did you get that?
Got part, go ahead.
Specific pieces into a lease, that's problematic for the Housing Authority and maybe problematic for other federal programs.
Yeah, you dropped off again, but I think I caught the gist of what you're saying in terms of adding a piece into a lease and that being problematic at this level, but also for the federal government as well?
Correct.
Okay.
And then lastly, the sending of the brochures to educate tenants and whether that would be, there's a different way to do it. So we spelled out a different way to do it in the amendment that we proposed.
Thank you, as always, for being good partners on this and taking a look at it. So that's very helpful. Any questions or comments from members of the committee at this point? Okay, just leave it open, didn't see any. All right, again, thank you for both Housing and HABC for chiming in. Any additional agency comments?
Mr. Chair, when would you like me to speak on the President's office?
Oh, yes, please. Actually, this is a perfect timing. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I just want to say first and foremost that, and also to the state's attorney, thanks for her office and their support for this legislation. I have had the opportunity to speak to a number of agencies in response to the reports that were in earlier. In particular, Law Department's report, you'll see the committees should have received from me via email, a set of amendments that are responsive to the Law Department's report and their concerns. Mr. Pietro and I had a conversation about it, and it's my understanding that the Law Department is A-OK with that set of amendments, which is really some clarity on some technical aspects that they wanted to point out and making sure that we aren't in conflict with a mayoral authority and also some provisions of the Charter. So thank you to the Law Department for that. Secondly, there is also an amendment from the President's office, which is the exact same amendment that Housing put forth that does change the effective date of this bill, delaying it for 120 days. We also were able to, I was also able to review Housing's amendments. We are in support of all of Housing's amendments except for Amendment Number Five, which would make the hearing optional, or having a hearing after the annual report optional. We are, we do not support that amendment in the President's office. Finance referred to the, you know, the cost, which I think was set about 5.7 million. When I spoke with Housing, that plus a little bit of conservative buffer, plus some other things that they talked about, we actually think that it's going to be more closer to 7, 7.5 million dollars. But again, there's a four-year implementation period. The expectation is that the four, four years might be needed to ramp up. And the Council President, who of course we know would be mayor-elect, is A-OK with, you know, that fiscal impact. And so just wanted to make sure that the committee is aware that we understand that fiscal impact and are prepared to handle and deal with that over the next four years. HABC, so I wasn't able, so a few of these, as you all know, a few of these reports came in, you know, today. So we haven't been able to fully respond to all of the, all of the things in those reports. I haven't been able to go through them and have conversations. So for instance, I saw, you know, HABC had some amendments, and some of them I think might be okay. But we might need to come back, Mr. Chair, on, if we are able to move this bill favorably today, come back on the floor with those on, at the next council meeting. HABC mentioned that they wanted to make some, they wanted to get some clarity on, regarding to some of their proceedings and administrative stuff that might, whether it's going to be included in this bill. I think that our intent is that some of those proceedings would be included, but we will, I want to have, again, a further conversation with HABC now that I have their bill report, so that way we can come back to this, not this committee, but to the full council, hopefully, with any amendments necessary to reflect that. And that's all I have for now, Mr. Chair. Hopefully, this committee will move the bill favorably.
Okay, and thank you, Kaylin. It is encouraging to hear the Council President's office being in communication with all these agencies and being able to iron out some of these differences and make sure that there's a way forward, so that is very much appreciated. And then I also take your second suggestion as it relates to what could potentially happen down the road. So again, thank you for that comment. Any questions from members of the committee and also Kaylin, I see you have another one, yes?
Yeah, one more quick thing. Housing, sorry, they had an amendment that was akin to Law Department's amendment where they talked about refer to versus are offered to. I think the Law Department amendment for that section is the one we would like to go with.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
First of all, have those Housing Department amendments been distributed to the committee so that I can read them and be very clear about which ones we're referring to when we consider those for a vote?
They were sent over today to the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. I can try to forward them to you right now.
Thank you. I have a lot in my inbox. If I received them already, I just haven't noticed, but perhaps I haven't. And then my question to the Council President's office is regarding the four-year phase-in. The uncodified language of Section 3A and 3B in the bill, it says that there's a four-year kind of phase-in in Section A, and then in Section B, it lays out criteria for potential consideration or necessary consideration. I don't know. When considering how to phase in, is it the Council President's office, Council President's office's understanding of any particular curve or rate to that phase in over four years? Is there an expectation of how much of the total volume, potential volume, gets taken up in the first year, two years, three years?
I think that's an excellent question. No, we didn't necessarily think about specifics on that. We left it vague purposefully, I think, to allow future administration the flexibility necessary to do it. I think that, though, in the conversations that we've had with, in particular with Housing and with the advocates, is that we would want to move at, with all deliberate speed, as fast as practical and as fast as the budget allows. So without any unnecessary delays and keeping everybody, of course, informed and a part of the process, we would want to move forward. And also leaving room additionally for, should an extension be necessary, then we would revisit that down the line, though we wouldn't want to put that in now. We would want to do that maybe, you know, if it's 2023 and we realize we need another two years, then we would do that. But again, having everybody at the table and at the forefront of that conversation.
I think that your final comment there strikes right at the concern that I was hoping to clarify, and I think it does it well, that the combination of giving time, giving the Housing Department, the Housing Commissioner discretion in determining exactly how rapidly to phase this in and the time that allow, that that allows the Finance Department to work through financial modeling and all that seems reasonable and adequate to mitigate the concerns that I, you know, in my estimation of what was voiced by the Finance Department. So I'm very satisfied with that. And I did just want to come back to Bill Wells' comment for just one second about concerns over those who are of adequate means taking advantage of this. I think that this is very much akin to the relationship between private counsel and public defenders in criminal court proceedings. Anybody of significant enough means that they have a $3,000 rent, to use your example, that they have a $3,000 rent, and, you know, they're probably more likely to have the means and wherewithal to be fighting that with private counsel, I would guess. I'd be, I would be unsurprised if the advocates who are going to testify here today tell me otherwise, and I would accept that. But it's my sense that people of significant enough means that they could hire private counsel perhaps are much more likely to hire private counsel rather than to rely on public services. So that's all I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the Council President's office for preparing all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. You know, I know this is an issue that affects many people, and there are a number of folks who want to testify. So one of the things that I will do, I'm going to go down this list of folks who have already signed to testify. Hopefully, we can get through that list and have the technical difficulties. But again, if we do, please bear with us. I'll just go down the list, and then I'll try to go one by one. So we see Matt Hill from Public Justice Center. We also have a New York City Council member, Vanessa Gibson, Tamika Hilton, Pranita Taylor, Fred Demai, also Dr. Chaudry, Neil Stancamp, Dr. Thomas, Brian Alston, Pablo Estupian, Tiffany Ralph, Carissa Hatfield, Josh Schlanner, and then also Sharice Lu. So hopefully, everyone is available to speak at this point. And I see we also have, I saw our agency representatives who are with us as well. So we do want to provide an opportunity for folks to weigh in on this very important piece of legislation. All right, Matt Hill, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Bullock, members of the committee. Matt Hill, Public Justice Center. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this important legislation. I just want to ground this in, first, in the reality of now, which is that the landlords in the court have evicted 451 families in Baltimore City from August through October 2020 in the middle of this ongoing pandemic. We're getting reports that rent delinquencies are anywhere from 100% to 200% greater than they were before COVID-19. And so on behalf of Public Justice Center and Baltimore Renters United and the 32 organizations that have signed on to support this legislation, we strongly urge the council to pass this bill. By doing so, Baltimore would join a growing movement of progressive jurisdictions such as New York City, Philadelphia, Cleveland, Newark, San Francisco, and Boulder that have recognized that right to counsel does dramatically reduce the number of families displaced by eviction and is a proven cost-effective means of doing so. You're going to hear from a lot of folks who are going to testify to different aspects of this bill, including the cost of the bill and, well, the cost-savings of the bill. You're going to hear about the racial and gender disparities around eviction in Baltimore City and how this bill addresses those to a certain extent. And how, I just want to emphasize in my testimony right now, the tenants have defenses to evictions. And that in one survey of around 300 tenants, 80% of folks had defenses to their eviction action, but only 8% of those tenants with a defense based on uninhabitable conditions. action, but only 8% of those tenants with a defense based on uninhabitable conditions were successful raising that defense, um, in their case. So I, I think that, uh, what I've heard is right. I want to just agree with Councilman Dorsey that there is a four-year implementation, uh, period here and a phase-in period and a, uh, means of providing some oversight and, uh, some input from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission. And I think D H C D, the commission should form a task force to, uh, carefully work through all the important details about how this program, uh, will work to provide for a right to counsel. Um, I'm happy to go through some of the technical aspects of the bill, but I know we have a long, uh, hearing and a number of folks who want to testify. I do want to highlight, uh, something that, that Ms. Murdock also said that I agree with, that is, D C is already providing a significant amount of funding for counsel and eviction cases, uh, through the Federal Cares Act funds. Um, it's, you know, in terms of how to pay for it, that's the, the big question. And I would just say that, again, the cost of an action is, is great here, especially during an ongoing pandemic. And you're going to hear about the effects, uh, of eviction to increase homelessness and the effects on children's education and the ways in which city and state government already pay for that. And so let's just be clear that there's a price for inaction as well, and that's very, very high. Um, so in terms of the practical realities of how to pay for it now, until we can realize some of those cost savings and benefits, again, the city is getting federal, uh, funds, um, is already allocating around $600,000 or $700,000 of those federal funds to providing legal representation, uh, in eviction cases. That, to me, is a down payment and part of the money that can be used toward meeting, um, the, the implementation goals of the program and hopefully building on those goals because we expect additional stimulus money to come from D C, um, in the near future. So, um, I will say that then, you know, we're also, as someone said, working on state legislation. If state legislation passes the way it's framed now, the money that would have gone to implementing this in, uh, Baltimore City through the state bill would go to the city's, uh, program. And so this is a way in which the city and the state can work together to fund, um, this important right and to realize the cost savings that accrue to both the city and the state. So with that, I'm happy to take any, any questions. Uh, I think one of my colleagues is going to address the, the issues raised by H A B C. Um, and we support the council president's amendments. And, uh, yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please, and thank you for joining us today.
Good afternoon. It's an honor to be with you. Thank you so much, Chairman Bullock, uh, and members of the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Uh, I also want to recognize your council president, President Scott, as well as the Madam Attorney General, uh, Mosby. I heard her speak earlier. She was phenomenal. Uh, I am New York City Council Member Vanessa Gibson. I represent a district in the Bronx, the home of the New York Yankees. And I thank you all for the opportunity to offer testimony in support of Council Bill Number 20-0625, the tenant's right to counsel in eviction cases, and how passage of this legislation before you can and will make a significant difference in preventing evictions, providing housing stability, and saving the city of Baltimore millions of dollars in shelter costs. So way back in 2014, I was proud to join my New York City colleague, Mark Levine, in introducing Intro 214, which was known as the Right to Counsel Legislation in the New York City Council, which provides free legal representation for tenants facing eviction proceedings in housing court. On average, in my county of the Bronx, we saw 11,000 evictions annually, and 90% of landlords had lawyers while only 10% of tenants had lawyers. So we learned that landlords were abusing housing court. They were threatening, uh, evictions as a means of harassment, and many tenants who were very unfamiliar with a complicated court process would miss their deadlines, their filings. They would sign stipulations they did not understand. They would agree to payment terms that they were unable to comply with. At the same time, New York City was experiencing a homelessness crisis with over 62,000 families living in temporary housing, and one-third of this number are children 18 years of age and younger. A significant number of those families who are evicted will become homeless, and we fundamentally believe that the best solution to homelessness is to prevent it from happening in the first place. A large majority of these families facing eviction are low-income residents and families of color. We knew that as a city in New York, we had to do better. And so a movement began with the Right to Counsel Coalition. We joined tenant leaders, advocates, legal service providers, civil rights groups, and community partners with a simple purpose. It was essentially to protect tenants and keep them in their homes. And I'm very proud to say that three years later, in 2017, after hearings, meetings, rallies, press conferences, we were able to get the legislation overwhelmingly passed in the New York City Council, and the mayor's office put forth a five-year phase-in plan for us that would total $155 million. Through this legislation, we've already seen more than 350,000 New Yorkers receive free legal representation, advice, housing assistance since 2014 with 30% fewer evictions. So we were proving that providing free lawyers to tenants in eviction cases is a worthy investment to keep families in their homes, reduce the burden on our shelter system, and protect tenants. Right to counsel balances the scale of justice, and when tenants have a fair chance to fight in housing court, they will win. Once people have a right to something, it's hard to take it away. And so fast forward to where we are today. We also recognize the importance of launching an aggressive public awareness campaign because people have to know about this law. We had to promote right to counsel. We had to create a website that provided information. We had to reform housing court. We needed signage, language access, privacy space. And finally, we supported the work of community organizations on the ground to organize tenants and inform them of their rights under the law. While we are extremely proud here in New York City to be the first municipality to implement this measure, we're thankful that we are not the last. Philadelphia, Cleveland, Newark, San Francisco, and most recently, Boulder, Colorado have adopted similar legislation. And given the reality that you and your colleagues have talked about the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on communities of color, loss of income, healthcare disparities, insufficient access to quality healthcare, and unstable housing, it is more important now than ever before to consider this legislation before you. We also want to change people's viewpoint about the role of legal services to preserving the fundamentals of life. Affordable and stable housing is a part of the fundamentals of life. Legal representation is a lifeline. It is hope, and most of all, it's stability. And so as I close, I am grateful to offer testimony on behalf of New York City today, and I appreciate the leadership of your council president, Brandon Scott, and I want to congratulate him. I know he's moving on to bigger and better things. And I also want to thank all of you because having legislation put forth begins a dialogue. It can stimulate a conversation. But if you know the numbers and you hear civil legal service providers talk about the number of evictions, think about the people that are behind those numbers. They are African-American, they are Latino, they are immigrant families, they are low-wage workers, they are essential workers, frontline workers. They have been out for months working on behalf of the city of families, and now it's our time to have their back. This can truly be a game changer for your city, and I hope that you will consider this bill and certainly the amendments put forward. I appreciate your time today, and I hope that you will count on us in New York City to help all of you in any way we can to move this legislation forward. I proudly support, and I thank you so much for your time, Mr. Chair.
Uh, again, thank you, um, Councilmember Gibson. Really appreciate you joining us today. Um, again, notwithstanding the American League rivalry, we call it that, um, but then also, I, I, I do want to echo, uh, what you mentioned in terms of race, um, but also justice. And one of the things that we take very seriously, and I think is, is a, is a, something we should move forward doing, is looking at what other jurisdictions have been able to do and be successful as we face some of these challenges, um, that that Baltimore's dealing with, that are not, that are not unique to Baltimore. So again, your experience in New York, uh, can be very helpful, uh, for us. So again, thank you for that. It looked like also, uh, Councilman Henry had either a comment or a question.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I wanted to ask if, uh, in respect for the Councilwoman's incredible testimony, Councilwoman, thank you so much. Uh, uh, the, the, the passion you put into that, um, has, uh, caused me to, uh, refrain from asking that the beginning of your remarks be stricken, um, in terms of the, the reference, the reference to the, the team that we, uh, normally do not mention in these chambers. But, um, but, but, but the, the remainder of your remarks were, as the chair said, right on point. And I want to thank you so much, um, for, 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 for sharing the, uh, the experience of, of, of your city with us and our, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yes, I concur. All right. So, so thank you again. I know we have a bunch of folks who are here to testify, so we're going to move right on down the list.
Pranitha Taylor.
Hi, my name, hello to all. Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Good afternoon. Please proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Hello to all. I am Pranitha Taylor, a board member of Communities United, event coordinator for faith. I am a single disabled mother of two daughters. In March 2013, I had my first stroke, brain embolism surgery, and an FPO closure in my heart. I could no longer work my previous job, had to apply for disability. In March 2015, I had a second stroke, which placed me in a nursing home for rehabilitation to learn how to walk and talk again. Second stroke left me with right side residual weakness. In 2015, I had a landlord that I taught that had mold in my basement. The landlord didn't want to fix the mold and sold the home, so me and my two daughters, our dog and cat lived them. We were homeless for several months. And my oldest daughter was away in college, and my youngest daughter had to go and live for a father. My youngest daughter and I were so depressed. A friend of mine took me in his home for several months. Then in 2016 to 2017, I moved into a two-bedroom apartment as a abandoned apartment for two months. I mean, as a abandoned apartment for a year, my rent increased. By me being on disability, I no longer could afford the rent. I had to move to a home, a house in East Baltimore. After living in the house in East Baltimore, the guy that rented me the house, the three-bedroom house, told me, he was the property manager for the house. After being in the house for several months, that he didn't work in the, that he didn't work in the house, the windows in the bedrooms and kitchens wouldn't close. So the windows in the kitchen didn't close, rats were coming in the house, in the home. My daughter and I had to share the main bedroom, but the window and the bedroom didn't close. The rain poured on my doors and my head, and as we laid in the bed, and there wasn't no heat working in the home, so we were freezing in the house. I prayed, I prayed, I prayed. And while we sleeping, mice and roaches were fed it, and the house were running on us. My daughter and I tried to bless. I called code enforcement and Communities United. That's when I found out the house wasn't registered. I was scammed. It took me several months to make, to move out the house because I am disability, and I didn't have the funds for a first month's credit deposit and moving helpers and a truck. I moved to a house with the landlord doesn't want to fix anything in the house. I am, I'm a, I'm a, I am in, when I first moved in the house, the landlord didn't want to do any repairs in the house. He always said it's me and my daughters, me and my two daughters' fault. There's something that's wrong in the house. In October 2020, I had to take this landlord to rent court to have my rent put in escrow. I had mold in my basement and the front and back of the basement because of the flooding that was in the sunroom. The landlord had someone to clean, to clean the outside gutters. The flood made my back and front of the basement moldy along with my, along with, with, I'm sorry, along with me and my daughters, my daughters' belongings. People would come to my home, and as soon as they approached my living room, they would say, they could smell the mold. My daughters and I couldn't even sit in the living room because the smell was so intense. The judge made my landlord repair the islands in my home, had to call, which I had to call code enforcement. They came out and took pictures of the mold because I told my landlord to rent court. My landlord is retaliating against me.
I think, Ms. Taylor, I think we lost you for a second.
Hello, can you hear me still?
Yeah, we, we have, hear you now. Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Please go ahead. Ms. Taylor? Uh, Ms. Taylor? Well, one thing I'll, I'll say, uh, to every why while we're waiting on, on Ms. Taylor, hopefully, um, you know, one of the things I just want to share, you know, is that, uh, Ms. Taylor is, is connected, uh, with me personally in our office, um, given some of the challenges she's been dealing with. And I do, uh, think it's appropriate that she has the ability to be able to share some of her experiences, um, as, as a renter and as a tenant who's, who's faced eviction, and also, uh, some of the challenges, um, therein. So again, I, I appreciate, you know, your testimony today, Ms. Taylor, and, uh, for everyone hearing and taking note of some of the real challenges that folks are dealing with. All right. We'll, we'll continue with the rest of testimony.
All right, we have Amanda DiStefano. Amanda DiStefano? Okay, she did not, doesn't want to testify. Ashley Doherty? Okay. That's Zayn. Okay, he's making noise. Uh, okay, he's, he's not, just do not try. Uh, okay, she's doing.
This office is bad feedback. If you could just mute yourself in the meantime.
Brudumas?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, Mr. Chairman and members of the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Thank you so much for this hearing and hearing this testimony. My name is Bridge DuMay, and I'm a political organizer with 1199 SEIU, United Healthcare Workers. We are the largest healthcare workers union in the nation, representing 5,000 members in Baltimore City alone. The COVID-19 pandemic has has shown an undeniable spotlight on systemic discrimination across the board, and housing inequality is not immune from this problem. Not only is stable and affordable housing a human right on an individual level, making sure people are helped to benefit public health citywide. Our union is in favor of Bill 20-0625, mandating a right to counsel in evictions court, and we urge the committee to issue a favorable report. Public health experts agree that two of the most effective ways to slow the spread of COVID-19 are for people to stay home, where they can social distance and practice good hygiene. Due to the unemployment crisis caused by COVID-19, tens of thousands of Baltimoreans are now at higher risk of eviction, which can fuel a homelessness crisis that will prevent people from staying home and drive them towards shelters that are prone to COVID-19 outbreaks. If enough people cannot stay home, we will continue to see adverse public health and economic impacts of COVID-19 rippling through the city. Members of 1199 SEIU are hospital and long-term care workers on the front lines of COVID-19 every day, and due to the nature of their work, they are at increased risk of contracting COVID-19. Most 1199 members are still not receiving hazard pay, adequate PPE, and enough rapid result testing despite the sacrifices they are making. As COVID-19 case numbers continue to rise in Baltimore, we need to do everything in our power to get this pandemic under control, to keep healthcare workers and everyone else safe. We can't afford inaction on this urgent issue. Please vote yes on Bill 20-0625 for right to counsel in eviction cases. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your testimony and working with the group to try to make sure that this moves forward. So thank you very much. We are going to continue with the testimony. Is Dr. Chaudry available?
Hello, can you hear me?
Mi- Mi-Ha Chaudry?
Hi, yes. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Bullock. Thank you, committee members, for holding this hearing. I'm speaking today in support of Council Bill Number 200625, Right to Counsel in Eviction Cases. I'm speaking to you today as a doctor and public health practitioner with, I received my medical education at Harvard Medical School and public health training at Johns Hopkins, and have since been caring for hundreds of patients in our COVID-19 safety net system in Baltimore. I've had the privilege of caring for over 300 patients since the pandemic began in March. And in this role, I do want to emphasize that nearly all of my patients share one of three criteria: either A, they're homeless, B, they're housing insecure, or C, they live in crowded living conditions. All three of these are linked to evictions and can be protected by ensuring the right to counsel for eviction, as we've already heard from our colleagues in New York City. In fact, you know, in our safety net systems, we see many of our patients, if not most of our patients, coming in from congregate living facilities, shelters, substance use treatment, rehabilitation centers, or overcrowded housing. I want to take a moment to just center this public health moment and make this really centrally about the right to life and to live in the midst of this pandemic. We know from reliable epidemiological data from Massachusetts that people experiencing homelessness, exposed to the shelter system, or overcrowded living conditions, have a 24 times higher rate, say that again, a 24 times higher rate of contracting COVID-19 compared to the general population. This study was done in April. April is when shelter populations are relatively low. We are, in November, it's not even cold yet. To imagine how much higher than 24 times individuals experiencing homelessness will contract COVID in the midst of a cold winter, with surging rates of homelessness, is a terrifying prospect. As winter comes, other things are also coming. Influenza is coming. Every week for the past several weeks, COVID-19 case numbers have reached new highs, most recently four days ago. Maryland saw a COVID-19 case rise equivalent to the highest point in the pandemic this past summer. And this, again, is before it's gotten cold, and before most of us has moved inside, and before flu has hit our city and our communities. We know from data, we know from evidence, that protecting renters from eviction, preventing them from turning to shelters, or moving into crowded homes with other family and friends, prevents COVID-19. As, we also know that this is, this is really at its core, I think, a racial equity and civil rights issue. Most of the patients I see are low-income, most of them are Black patients, and most of them are from the Latinx community. These are also the groups that are most likely to face eviction, and this is not a coincidence. This is, you know, even before the pandemic, Black women were nearly four times more likely than white men to be evicted. And this is also the same group that has a much higher disproportionate rate of COVID-19 exposure, hospitalization, and death. I'll end by saying that, that this bill is also now more important than ever, given how rapidly rights to housing and have changed kind of with the policy landscape recently. There's already data documenting that renters unfortunately are generally unaware of their housing and legal rights, and this is even more true right now during the pandemic, when those laws and those legal rights have changed rapidly. So the choice, I really want to make the choice very stark and clear to the city council, between choosing an evidence-based policy that will certainly, undeniably save lives, from what we know from the public health literature and data, or allow evictions to continue unchecked and increase public exposure, transmission, and death due to COVID-19. Thank you.
And, you know, thank you so much. I know you've been at the forefront of dealing as a frontline worker with some of the challenges from the health perspective. But again, I appreciate how you connect health to housing. So it's very helpful to have these comments, and thank you very much. I know that Pranitha Taylor was also testifying previously, and she has technical difficulties. Hope we can get her back in at some point. And then we're also going to continue down the list.
We'll try Pranitha Taylor again.
And do you want Ms. Taylor to go first or Neil?
Yeah, we could have Ms. Taylor go first and then go to Neil, if we can. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Ms. Taylor, if you can hear us, you can speak now.
Sorry, I forgot the disc. I'm sorry about that. I was, I was saying, I took my landlord to rent court, and my landlord is now retaliating against me. And sent me a summon, saying I damaged the house throughout, if I had to pay rent. I know not pay my rent. I pay my rent every month on the second or third of the month. As soon as I get my disability check, I present all my rental receipts to the judge, which when I paid the form, and I was never late. My landlord started retaliating against me on November 3rd last week. I came home from my part-time job, and I couldn't get in my home, my house. Luckily, my daughter was home and opened the door for me. I and my daughter tried our door key, and the landlord changed a lot. I went the next day to rent court to put my rent in escrow, because it was election day, it was closed. So I went again on November 4th, the next day, after I went, as I got off work, I went to rent court, put my November's rent in escrow. That's when I was told to go to 500 North Cal Street to file penalty charges on my landlord. Because what he has done is called a legal eviction. I think everyone should have counsel before going to court, because some landlords retaliate against others, tenants. And there's really no help for tenants being evicted. Thank you for my testimony. Thank you.
Thank, no, thank you very much. Again, as I mentioned, you know, it's important to hear firsthand from folks who are dealing with it. And, you know, sorry to hear about the conditions that, you know, both you and your daughter are dealing with. And hopefully, you know, what we do today can help move things in the right direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Neil Scott.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Chairman Bullock, Council President Scott, Attorney General Mosby, committee members and other guests, thank you for the opportunity to provide these remarks to the committee on this important bill. Stout, a global financial advisory firm with whom I'm a managing director, was engaged by the Public Justice Center to perform an analysis of the costs and benefits associated with a right to counsel for low-income tenants and eviction proceedings in Baltimore City, and the benefits that Baltimore City, as well as Maryland, may realize by enacting such a right. In Baltimore, prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, there were approximately 140,000 eviction filings every year, and 125,000 rental units, an eviction filing rate of more than 100%. That is, every year in Baltimore City, there are more evictions filed than there are actual rental units, indicating that a portion of renters are receiving multiple eviction filings each year. Because the relatively low cost of filing an eviction in Baltimore City, which is between $30 and $56, in the absence of a notice-to-quit requirement, many landlords in Baltimore City use eviction filings as a rent collection mechanism. In Baltimore City, based on our analysis, approximately 99% of tenants are unrepresented in their eviction cases. We estimate that only 4% of landlords are unrepresented or unassisted in their eviction cases against Baltimore renters. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, low-income tenants will become more economically and financially disadvantaged, more likely to miss a rent payment, and more likely to experience increasing pressure from landlords, who may also be experiencing economic and financial pressures of their own. In these circumstances, it's critically important for low-income tenants to remain in their homes, or be connected to services that can assist with finding alternative, safe, and stable housing, both of which can be achieved by and through free legal representation through a right to counsel. For tenants facing eviction in cities across the country, having legal representation is often the difference between keeping their home and becoming homeless. As Councilwoman Gibson indicated, it is a lifeline. In New York City, San Francisco, Newark, Cleveland, Philadelphia, and very recently Boulder, Colorado, have all passed legislation guaranteeing counsel to tenants. Each of these cities have recognized that legal representation is essential for low-income families facing eviction, but also that it is a prudent and necessary investment. Numerous other cities across the country are considering similar right to counsel legislation. Stout quantified potential benefits or costs avoided related to emergency shelter, temporary housing programs, mental and physical health institution housing, school funding, transportation for students experiencing homelessness, healthcare and foster care. Stout's estimate of the annual cost of this disruptive displacement or potential costs avoided as a result of a right to counsel may be significantly understated. If tenants experienced more stable housing, Baltimore City would enjoy many benefits that right now are not reliably quantifiable, and therefore aren't included in our calculations. These include, but aren't limited to, education, juvenile justice, and child welfare costs associated with children experiencing homelessness, the negative impact of eviction on tenants' credit scores and abilities to re-rent, and the potential loss of a subsidized housing voucher, the cost of providing public benefits when jobs are lost due to eviction or the eviction process, the cost to family, community, and neighborhood instability, the preservation of financial and personal assets, the cost of Baltimore City of enforcing rent laws and regulations that can be avoided, and a reduction over time of the number of eviction cases filed resulting in improved use of Baltimore City court resources, which, as we heard earlier, has absolutely been the experience in New York City. When tenants are represented, they can avoid the high likelihood of disruptive displacement in approximately 92% of cases. We estimate that with an annual investment in a right to counsel of approximately 5.7 million, which, as we heard, can be phased in over time, reducing the initial investment in the early years, Baltimore City tenants with incomes lower than 50% of the area median income, which is about $50,000 for a family of four, will reduce the current cost of disruptive displacement by an estimated $17.5 million to the city, which could be realized over time, but again, is likely understated for the reasons I mentioned just a moment ago. That's approximately a return on investment just for those costs that we've quantified of about 300%, or $3 for every dollar of investment. The costs that we're talking about in terms of avoided costs, $10.6 million in emergency shelter and temporary housing costs, $2.3 million in lost public school funding, $2.4 million in school transportation for students experiencing homelessness, $2 million in Medicaid spending for physical healthcare, and $103,000 in foster care, according to administrative costs that may be avoided if there is a right to counsel and people who are represented and avoiding the disruptive displacement of the eviction process. Additional cost reductions or costs avoided would likely be realized by the state of Maryland if Baltimore City were to enact a right to counsel. The costs and benefits of a right to counsel may vary based on various factors related to the implementation of the right to counsel, but the return on investment is likely to remain at or above $3 for every dollar invested. In the face of these impending financial challenges for municipalities impacted by the economic consequences of the pandemic, an investment in a right to counsel is fiscally prudent and will result in a significant cost savings relative to the extraordinary costs that would be incurred to support low-income Baltimore City residents left to endure the trauma of the eviction process without the assistance of a lawyer. As Matt Hill mentioned earlier, the cost of inaction is very high. Thank you again for allowing me some time to share the results of our study.
Oh, thank you very much for your testimony. I do appreciate the fact that you're able to give some of the larger ramifications of evictions and what it means down the line. So thank you for adding that. We'll continue along with additional testimony.
Tim Thom- Tim Thomas?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Dr. Tim Thomas. I'm the research director for the Urban Displacement Project at the University of California at Berkeley. And I recently did a study, I'm also the principal investigator for a group called the Evictions Study. And we recently did a report on evictions in Baltimore. And first of all, I want to thank you all for giving me a chance to testify and talk a little bit about the statistics that we came up with. Basically, what we found in our research is that there's a massive racial disparity in evictions. For every one white household that gets evicted, three Black households get evicted. That is 195% higher rate of eviction amongst Black households than White households. And the number of Black female-headed households, which has been cited before, is four times higher than White female households getting evicted. That's 296% more. What this leads to is about 7.3% of the Black male-headed households What this leads to is about 7.3% of the black male-headed households, uh, uh, population and 5.4% of the black female head, headed household population has actually been evicted. This is about 51% higher than white evictions. So there's a huge racial disparity in what's going on. Now, the issue with evictions in particular is that with an eviction, you have a 20% higher chance of becoming homeless. In other words, one in five people who get evicted will probably end up homeless. It is the second leading causing factor of homelessness, which is just under whether or not you as an adult had homelessness before. So this is, in other words, eviction is, uh, more predictive of homelessness than uh, unemployment, than rent, than, uh, other, facing domestic violence, a host of other issues. Evictions plays a very huge role. The problem with this is that because of COVID-19, there's been a massive drop in evictions. From what I understand is because the court system has delayed, uh, scheduling evictions and it's led to a much lower rate of eviction at this point. So just imagine what it's going to happen once, uh, vaccination is, is, uh, secured and the court system fires back up to speed. Baltimore City will face one of the greatest eviction crises in its, in its history and also eventually one of the greatest homelessness, uh, crises that it's ever had before too. If there is no, uh, legal representation and other policies that try to curb this massive increase in evictions. Now, I, I have a PhD and if I had an eviction, I would be very hard pressed to navigate the legal process. And I'm sure if you just ask yourself, if you had an eviction, where would you start? Who's the first person you would call? Everyone would probably call Matt Hill, probably if you know him. But the process in itself, those that don't have these networks is very difficult. So it's paramount that this bill is considered and passed. Because, uh, all the research that I've seen where legal representation's been implemented in other cities, including Washington State and, uh, the Bay Area and Colorado, it has massive, massive impacts in reducing the eviction rate because simply it gets the tenant and the landlord to speak to each other. So what we find in, in terms, we've mapped out where evictions are happening the most. The highest risk of eviction, if you go to our website at evictions.study, we have a map of Baltimore and it shows that on the west side, we have the highest risk of eviction. And on the east side, uh, up towards the northeast, there's a couple of spikes of evictions happening there. On the west side, there's high levels of segregation. And then on the north and the south, you have the lowest levels of segregation, of, I'm sorry, of, uh, of eviction risk. So in, by and large, uh, I think that it's, it's important to consider what will happen after the pandemic, uh, ends and who this will affect. This will definitely affect uh, black households far more than white and Latinx households and Asian households. So these are just some of the statistics and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you for your testimony. You know, uh, Dr. Thomas, I'll say, you know, from one academic to another, um, it's great to see the applied nature of research and the fact that, um, you can speak to these issues. Um, especially as you mentioned, uh, some of the challenges on the west side and happen to represent, uh, the west side. So again, uh, whether we're on the east side or the west side, the fact this is something that's significant for us to deal with. So again, uh, your testimony is much appreciated. We will go on. I know there are a bunch of folks who want to, uh, participate, so we will go right down the line.
Carissa Hadfield, Carissa Hadfield.
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. Um, good afternoon Chairman Bullock and committee members. Um, I thank you for the honor of being able to testify this afternoon in support of Council Bill 20-0625, uh, the Right to Counsel Bill. Um, I am a staff attorney with the Homeless Persons Representation Project, uh, which is a nonprofit legal services provider that provides free legal representation to people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Um, and we also advocate for public policy that will help to prevent and end homelessness, which is why we are here today. Um, in Baltimore City, at the point in time count that occurred at the beginning of this year, um, 2,193 Baltimoreans were experiencing homelessness on the one evening where the point in time count took place. This bill, 20-0625, would provide a right to counsel in eviction cases and it would be critical to ensuring front-end services for Baltimore City tenants, um, that will help to prevent evictions and resulting homelessness. Um, HPRP in its work, um, represents tenants, um, in Baltimore City in landlord-tenant proceedings. And one of the things that we have been doing for a long time um, is representing tenants in the Section 8 docket every Thursday morning at Baltimore City Rent Court. Um, even before the pandemic, uh, we frequently encountered tenants who had valid legal defenses to their failure to pay rent cases. Um, some of the things that have been touched upon today such as conditions, issues that threaten the tenant's life, health or safety. Um, defenses including landlord, a landlord's failure to obtain a valid rental license, which is required for all properties in Baltimore City. Um, and landlords' attempts to collect water bills and legal fees in rent court that they're not permitted to, uh, collect. Um, and these are things that we saw even before COVID-19 hit and impacted our city. Um, and now with COVID, um, thousands of Baltimore City tenants, as I'm sure that you know, have lost their jobs and are facing serious medical expenses, um, due to the virus. Um, protections that were available to tenants before the pandemic were confusing at best um, and impossible to navigate at worst. Um, but now new protections have been passed, um, on the local, state and federal level. The tenants have no idea, um, how to pursue or to, um, effectively raise a defense uh, to a possible eviction during this climate. Um, we want to be able to provide effective representation to tenants um, during this process because it is more likely that a tenant will have successful outcomes if they are represented. Um, as the Stow Report cites, um, 92% of tenants surveyed in the Stow Report avoided disruptive displacement with the assistance of legal counsel. Without legal counsel, those tenants who had effective defenses that could have prevented their eviction, 80% pursuant to the Stow Report, only 8% of those were able to raise a valid defense and be able to effectively argue their case in court. This is a critical issue. This is a time when tenants now more than ever need assistance from attorneys who are willing to represent them and have the skills and expertise to do so. I would like to talk briefly about a tenant that I recently represented, um, to demonstrate some of the issues that we see in court that tenants are unable to navigate on their own. Um, I represented a tenant by the name of Daphne, um, who had um, received a failure to pay rent complaint for nearly $5,000, um, for failure to pay rent. Um, however, what we were able to find out is that Daphne's landlord um, had failed to repair a hot water heater for nearly a year. Um, and this had caused Daphne significant costs and had she had opted in her, with her own money, her own tax returns, um, to pay and to have her water heater repaired and to pay for the replacement. With our assistance, Daphne was able to present this case to the court and notify them that she would like for, uh, uh, the court to reduce the amount of the judgment by what she had paid and the court granted that. Um, rather than having to pay $5,000 in rent, Daphne owed just $750. Um, and Daphne was able to pay that and was able to avoid eviction. Having legal counsel is essential to outcomes such as Daphne's. Um, because without that, Daphne would not know that she had the right to argue that and to ask the court to reduce the judgment based on the amount she had paid for her hot water heater. For tenants like Daphne, the right to counsel is essential to avoiding disruptive displacement. And it's an important step in preventing and ending homelessness in Baltimore City and creating an equitable and balanced legal system. Um, I would like to take the opportunity, um, to briefly address, um, since HPRP does represent, um, a significant number of subsidized tenants, some of the points that were brought up by, um, the Housing Authority of Baltimore City on today's hearing. Um, they did address some concerns that they felt that low-income renters um, should be prioritized in this bill and I don't believe there's any question from our partners, um, that that would be a likely scenario considering that the individuals who seek our services and seek services from other organizations that do provide free counsel and right to counsel, um, already, um, are primarily serving low-income individuals. Um, and they also expressed some concerns as far as access to an attorney and at what points um, a tenant could access an attorney and I would like to point to the bill language um, that states that, um, a tenant could access an attorney um, at the time of termination of tenancy, so failure to pay rent proceedings, um, as well as the termination of a housing subsidy, so that would cover the preceding administrative proceedings um, that HABC was addressing. And we believe that that representation is also essential um, in avoiding, um, homelessness and homelessness outcomes. Um, we would like to, as far as the amendments that were suggested by the Housing Authority, um, I would like to get some clarity on when, um, the Housing Authority would plan to provide um, a document relating to when their agents, their agent's contact information, if that would be provided at the time of lease signing or at a different time, um, and if there were any questions about that, that it be provided at the time of lease signing. Um, and also additionally addressing their point as far as notice, um, of the right to counsel. Um, they are requesting to send one brochure per year, um, to tenants notifying them of their right to counsel in proceedings. Um, we believe that this notice is insufficient. Um, as was covered by the Stow Report, um, there are multiple proceedings that are occurring on the same household. So if a tenant who is a partner in the Housing Authority of Baltimore City's voucher program receives more than one notice in a year of a failure to pay rent, no matter, they would only be receiving one notice that year of their right to counsel um, from the Housing Authority and we simply believe that isn't sufficient. Um, I do thank the council for their time, um, and if there are any questions, I am happy to answer them. Thank you so much.
No, just thank you for your testimony. Again, you speak to the importance of having, uh, the challenges to navigating the process and making sure that representation is in place. Again, to try to mount a, an adequate defense is going to be, uh, really important to, to do that. Um, a couple of points I want to make, I do see, it looks like Matt Hill has a hand up and I also see that there are a few folks, uh, that, uh, were still planning to testify. I see Brian Alston, uh, Pablo Estupinan and then, uh, Tiffany Rau. So, um, again, Matt, was there something you were trying to say and then also want to get to the rest of testimony?
Um, there was not a councilman. I appreciate the, I didn't mean to raise my hand. There was Tamika Hamilton also from our list who I believe is available to testify.
Alright.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
I just wanted to note, um, be, because of this last bit of testimony and testimony that was given earlier by Bill Wells. If somebody had interest in, um, seeing us clarify when notice has to be given and, you know, in order to accommodate representation and hearings and such. Um, if that's something that might, uh, you know, be easily enough put together, uh, that's certainly something that could come up for a second reader, uh, as a floor amendment if, um, if necessary and I'd be glad to, to work with the council president's office or any other advocate on that to, uh, get that straightened out if, you know, a, a, at least I'd be glad to have that conversation further beyond this hearing today.
And, uh, thank you, Councilman Dorsey. That is very helpful.
Thanks.
Alright, we're going to proceed with the rest of testimony. We'll go down. Uh, Mr. Chair, we're going to go to, uh, Pablo. I looked for, uh, Tamika as well as, uh, Brian Alston and I don't see them, uh, currently. So we'll go to Pablo next.
Alright, perfect. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Pablo Estupinan and I'm the interim co-coordinator of the Right to Counsel New York City Coalition and the deputy director of Casa in the Bronx, who helped found the Right to Counsel New York City Coalition back in 2013. Thank you to the members of the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee for allowing us to share our experiences from New York City in our successful campaign, uh, to establish a right to counsel. I'm here to testify on behalf of the Right to Counsel Coalition, a coalition in New York City of over 25 tenant organizations, legal service providers, advocates, and we're here today in full support of Council Bill 20-0685. Um, so as you all know, might have heard, the way that right to counsel has been rolled out in New York City has been on a zip, by zip code by zip code basis. Um, as of January 2020, before the pandemic hit, right to counsel covered 25 zip codes. So to us, uh, right to counsel was not only about establishing a fundamental civil right, about due process, um, but also about tipping the scales of power from landlords to renters. Um, and I think you all heard today about, uh, what it means for tenants to receive an eviction notice, how scary and intimidating it is, not knowing where to go, what kind of resources are available, and even just how to submit an answer that will keep people in their homes. Um, so since right to counsel's implementation in 2017 in New York City, um, we've seen that 84% of families who've been represented uh, by government-funded attorneys were able to remain in their homes. Um, in the last two years, we've also seen a decline in the number of eviction filings. So in the last few years, since the right to counsel phase in of the zip codes, we've also seen 25,000 less eviction cases started in housing courts. Um, in 2013, the city, uh, made an initial investment, um, in, in expanding legal services and that year, 28,800 families were evicted. Um, last year, uh, due to right to counsel and its implementation, the numbers of, uh, families who were evicted went down to 16,200. Um, simply put, right to counsel, as you all heard today, works and it's a cost-effective policy solution. Um, and I think, you know, from our standpoint, it's also an investment in marginalized communities for black and brown residents who have not historically been underfunded and subjected to systemic racism. Establishing right to counsel as a right is critical, but so is a community organizing, um, that goes, uh, along with it. And so, not, not sure if they're still here, but I did want to shout out our council member Vanessa Gibson for her testimony and she covered a lot of the points. Um, and it has been critical for us to work alongside with our elected officials in New York City, but also as community organizers, we're on the ground. We've been doing a lot of the tenant education work. We've been going to, you know, housing courts across New York City, um, to let people know about this right and to claim their right. And the other thing that, as a coalition that we have noticed, right, is evictions are a business model. Um, we published on the Right to Counsel New York City Coalition's website, our investigation around the worst evictors. Um, we wanted to know who are the evictors in New York City? What kind of cases are they filing? And to us, there is a clear pattern between corporate landlords using evictions as a business model to displace low-income, black and brown communities. Um, as a, you know, as a strategy to displace, uh, community members. And that about covers, uh, my testimony for today. So, uh, thank you all for, uh, for allowing us the opportunity to speak and share our experiences. Um, and I just wanted to close out by saying, as you all heard today, right to counsel is about racial justice. It is about economic justice. And I'm saddened to hear that, uh, from August 2028, 500 families have been evicted. And so I think there is a, I think in the organizing work, we're always challenged, uh, you know, by, by the city and folks around like, how can we fund this? But, you know, in the wake of a pandemic, it is a historical opportunity to really think about like what those maintaining communities look like, not just in a, during a public health crisis, but to, you know, securing a long-term housing stability of communities. So thank you all.
Uh, thank you all. Thank you for your organizing efforts. And again, you're lifting up the issues of both, uh, race and, um, economic justice. And the other part, um, that is also helpful again is, um, that experience, I'm in another city that's been successful with it. So thank you for sharing that. We're, we're going to continue with the testimony. Okay, Mr. Chair, we're going to go to, uh, Tamika Hamilton now.
Hello?
Uh, yes, hello. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Hello?
Yes, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, my name is Tamika Hamilton. Um, I'm a renter and a Baltimore City resident. Um, one second, hold on. I'm in the Bay Area. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Tamika Hamilton, and I'm a renter and a resident of Baltimore City. Shortly after COVID started, I temporarily lost my job and was unable to pay my rent. The landlord's property manager harassed me and threatened me constantly with illegal eviction. He even cut off my electricity, water at times until I paid the rent. I eventually got legal advice and paid electrician to restore my utilities to my property and changed my lock. The landlord then filed an eviction against me, and the landlord had an attorney. I was so stressed out that I didn't sleep some nights, and I would repeatedly break down crying. Luckily, I had an attorney for the eviction case through the Public Justice Center. My attorney forced the landlord to dismiss the case and promised never to use the property manager, who had cut off my BG&E again. A right to counsel would make sure that no one has to face an eviction case alone. And I, Tamika Hamilton, support this bill. Thank you.
No, thank you for your testimony, and sorry to hear about some of the challenges you've been dealing with. And hopefully we can make things better for some other folks. So thank you for your testimony.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we're going to go to, I believe, Tiffany Ralph next.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Tiffany Ralph. I am a current resident in the Bolton Hill neighborhood and the secretary for the Bolton House Residents Association. Many of the residents of my neighborhood and my building managed by Edgewood Management are currently living under dire conditions exacerbated by COVID-19 and are afraid to speak up and seek help in their situations due to fear of retaliation from the management. Edgewood Management is a well-known slumlord company whose properties have serious plumbing issues, which has resulted in severe black mold infestation and rodent infestations. Many of the residents in their properties have seen a decline in their health from living in such conditions. The few residents have been brave enough to step forward are targeted by management with retaliatory tactics, including failure to pay rent notices, eviction proceedings, and fraudulent financial charges on tenants' accounts. These tactics are used to instill fear into the tenants and unfortunately have proven to be effective. As a result, many of their tenants, a large number of which belong to the elderly population, have lived in their HUD subsidized units for 10-plus years and are afraid to lose their homes. For example, tenants residing in an Edgewood Management-run apartment building attempted to have a tenant meeting to discuss deteriorating conditions in their building and to unify to start and build a tenants' association not long ago. The building management sent a letter to all of the tenants stating that they were not allowed to hold such a meeting, that there was not a tenant association, and that the letter was serving as their first and final warning to cease and desist. Having a right to counsel bill on the books will provide tenants with an added source of security by assuring tenants that they will have access to legal advice and assistance when targeted, as well as allow for tenants to feel supported and secure in the knowledge that they indeed have a legal right to speak up without fear of retaliation, having their homes taken from them or living with a target on their backs. Right to counsel is an essential piece of the puzzle that will provide balance to the lives of your constituents by ensuring them that should they find themselves in a hazardous and/or toxic living environment, that their voices will indeed be heard, that there is legal recourse for them to take if necessary, and that they will be able to organize without fear and have their homes fixed, allowing them to live in a clean, safe, and healthy environment. Furthermore, the bill will help usher in the change that is desperately needed in this city by showing the developers and slumlords alike that you do not and will not stand behind nor support their misguided attempts to keep their tenants living in such deplorable conditions, but that you fully stand by your oath to work for the people in your district and Baltimore as a whole. Change is needed in this city, and this is a great first step towards making the changes that will benefit every one of us. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you for your time and testimony. Some of the things you've shared are quite troubling, and so this again speaks to some of the other issues now we'll be dealing with renters, but also some of the management companies. So those points are well taken. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Josh Swainer.
Hi. My name is Josh Swainer, and I want to thank the chairman and vice chair and the committee for being able to speak today. Want to voice my support for this important legislation on both behalf of Jews United for Justice, an organization, as well as a member of the bar state of Maryland. As Jews, the Torah requires us to preserve our own life and health and that of others. Jewish law teaches that in response to a plague, we have an obligation to stay in our homes as much as possible. And society has an obligation to make sure that people can stay in their homes, especially during this time of the pandemic. Now, I know we've talked about before the number of Baltimoreans who have been evicted, families since August, and I don't want to go through a lot that's been said already, but it's so critical having an attorney representing tenants facing eviction, especially when we have an unfair system that, for instance, courts don't check to make sure landlords have already, you know, have provided proper leases, have proper ledgers, rental licensing, and even lead certificates before even using the courts to bring evictions in the first place. This is exactly the type of issue an attorney would bring to light. And in my work, I practice personal injury law as an associate at Science and Kirk. And about 25% of the cases that I screen fall under the category of legal advice. Excuse me. Most of those requests actually fall under landlord-tenant disputes. I try to do my best to point these callers in the direction of help, but folks are very upset to learn that even if they have a phone, they don't necessarily have a lawyer. You know, these legal matters, they do require that they pay an attorney, a private attorney upfront, instead of the sort of contingency fee for an attorney that comes at the end of a settlement case. And most folks, especially tenants who find themselves facing eviction, they're just unable to afford those legal costs. And that's why this bill is critical. In 2014, I was a community organizer with Jews United for Justice, fresh out of my clerkship in the circuit court for Baltimore City. I and other volunteers, we stood in the hallway at District Court outside the courtroom where the rent cases were being held, and we intercepted tenants after their cases to take part in our survey. And what I witnessed in court and heard from renters was shockingly unjust. It really was. The results have been published since in the Justice Divertment Report, and the study makes clear that the practices at Rent Court, they tipped the scales unfairly towards landlords without providing equal justice for tenants, most of whom are Black women, many with children. Now, as the stout analysis, you know, to right to counsel shows, providing attorneys for tenants will save our city millions of dollars because the majority of renters have a valid defense in eviction cases. Keeping people housed, especially in a pandemic, it reduces homelessness, prevents the negative physical and mental health impacts, keeps families together, improves educational outcomes, and increases neighborhood safety and stability. The renters' right to counsel in eviction cases, it would make an enormous difference in meeting people's basic needs by just keeping thousands of people in their homes. It would level the playing field in the court of law, and it would just save money for the city. It's a win-win for Baltimore. And as the Baltimore Sun even said, it's a no-brainer. So I strongly and respectfully urge that the council pass this long overdue and essential legislation. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your testimony, but also your commitment to justice as well. And so your points are, make a lot of headway in terms of what we're trying to get done here. So thank you very much. I do believe that there are some folks who have called in, so we want to make sure we try to get everyone who wants to participate a chance before we hopefully move on to a vote.
Okay. Call-in user 10. When you hear the beep, go ahead. Call-in user 10. No response. Okay, that's fine. Number 12. Call-in user number 12. Call-in user number 12. Oop, too long. Call-in user 15. Looks like they've all hung up on us. Call-in user 15. Yeah. Call-in user number 21. Call-in user number 21. Call-in user number 21. Go ahead, please. Somebody. Call-in number 21. Number 21. There's some noise. Okay.
Okay, I think we have... Then we got through all of the... Okay, so I think we've got...
All of the call-in users.
All right, can we? Okay, so looks like we've gotten through public testimony at this point. I know that there are a host of amendments that the council president's office has been working with.
Mr. Chair.
I know Councilman Dorsey. Did you want to move those amendments? Yes, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, so we have two documents with amendments, one from the council president's office and one from the Housing Department. There are two amendments on the council president's set of amendments, which were done in collaboration with the Law Department. So they incorporate the Law Department's concerns into them. I'd like to move those two amendments favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so moved by Dorsey, second by Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained?
Yes.
Okay, is there, is there?
So, Mr. Chair, now the Housing Department's amendments, several, there was a document that was sent around with six amendments from the Housing Department, several of which are overlap or are redundant or differ slightly from what was incorporated into the two amendments from the council president's office that we just voted favorable. So I would like to move amendments two, three, and four from the Housing Department as favorable.
Is there a question or a second? Second by Henry. All right. Move by Dorsey, second by Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Okay, so it's on the...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the bill favorable with those amendments.
Is there a second?
Second. Snead.
I'll give the second to Snead this time. All right, so moved by Dorsey, second by Snead. I think we're ready for a vote.
Chair Bullock.
Yes.
Chair Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey.
I'm voting aye and looking forward to one last bill to vote on today.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Well, I was going to vote aye until I didn't get to second it, and now I got to think about it for a minute. Okay, aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead.
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Mr. Chair, there's seven votes in the affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second reader on Monday.
Well, look, thank you all for your patience. I know this is a long time coming, but at the same time, it's very important legislation. So again, and thank you also for our committee members for being so gracious with their firsts and seconds. So that takes care of our right to counsel in eviction cases. And we do want to then move to Councilman Dorsey's bill on the Office to End Homelessness as well.
Is there more business before the committee?
We're working, thanks, sir. All right. And I think we're working on some technical pieces. So I know we're working to get post key back to Richard. Thank you, Council President's Office, Dominic McIlly, great staffer, and also working together and making sure that we can close some of these gaps as well. So much appreciated. And then do want to move forward. So Councilman Dorsey, I know you've been waiting. Any comments you want to make regarding the bill that we have been working on in terms of the Office to End Homelessness? Do you want to have any comments at this point?
Mr. Chair, for Bill 20-0592, I sent around a set of amendments to the committee members on October 27th, along with an explanation of the nature of those six amendments. These are amendments that I worked through extensively with Elena DePietro, and I want to give my thanks to her for working through this with me. And they satisfy the concerns, and I'd like to make a motion that we adopt those amendments.
Okay, moved by Dorsey, second by Henry.
Can we hold on a second? I have to elevate the vice chair. Okay.
You want to make sure you raise yourself for that.
Hmm? We can move.
All right. So it was moved by Dorsey, second by Henry. Okay. The amendments. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Councilman Dorsey, I just want to commend you doing a great job working with Law Department Law. Did you have any comments on the amendments? I know you guys have been working very closely on this one. I think you're still muted, Elena.
I'm working with like the two different mouse things, and I was moving the wrong one. No, I think I'm satisfied now. We still have our differences, but I don't think they amount to a legal problem with the bill. So, but we came to some good conclusions with respect to this amendment, I think.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so the amendments have been moved. Okay, is there any additional commentary or question before we entertain another motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the bill favorable with amendment.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Yuric. I couldn't tell if she was trying to unmute herself.
I am. Is there the opportunity for testimony?
Oh, absolutely. Please, please go ahead.
Fantastic. Thank you. First, I understand it's been a marathon session today, so thank you for your time and patience. And a special thank you to Councilman Bullock for the opportunity to... And a special thank you to Councilman Bullock for the opportunity to participate, and to Councilman Dorsey for the amendment in particular to transfer staff from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services to the new office to end homelessness. Additionally, I would just like to thank the staff at NYHS for their participation in this process and the continuum of care for their partnership and working to solve homelessness in Baltimore. At this point, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services takes no position on this bill. However, there are several sections where we would like to offer some suggested amendments, especially as it relates to some potential contradiction in federal regulations and some ambiguities. I'll do my best to make it quick. The first issue that presented in this bill is that the standards for termination between project-based vouchers and tenant-based vouchers vary. For project-based vouchers, it mentions that individuals in those programs may be terminated based on a violation of program rules and regulations, which leaves the door open to potentially arbitrary termination based on that. So I would request that if, you know, as this bill moves forward, that it is potentially amended to have a single standard for what could qualify as grounds for termination. Housing is incredibly important, and I'm very worried at the possibility of two sets of standards for a single program. My next concern really focuses on Section 423, which states that families may request to return to permanent supportive housing at any time. I believe we should consult with HUD to clarify, but I'm very much concerned that this will not be feasible as technically permanent supportive housing is only available to individuals who are considered to be Category 1 or Category 4. Category 4, for shortness, is those fleeing domestic violence, and Category 1 is those who are literally homeless. So if somebody is housed in a housing voucher program at the time that they are applying to return to permanent supportive housing, technically they may not be eligible. So again, we should consult with our federal authorities on this point, but I would be very hesitant to include a provision that essentially promises a return and eligibility when those households may not in fact be eligible at that point in time. Furthermore, if they've been housed, the return to permanent supportive housing, it may be very difficult for those families because they'll more or less be placed at the bottom of the waitlist. It's not that they could not at some point in the future request a return, but the way the bill is currently written, it mentions that they could request that transition while they are housed, and that's going to be very difficult, if not impossible. So I would really recommend that we do some follow-up on that point. I am also concerned, but perhaps is a little bit more practical, about the request, sorry, the planned enrollment. So we have individuals who are in permanent supportive housing now, but there's really not much spoken to in the bill about how individuals would be selected, prioritized, or targeted for that. We have about 867 households currently in permanent supportive housing, and I would request that we consider some potential amendments to clarify how that might be rolled out. In addition to that, we mentioned this at the previous hearing, but I am quite concerned about the lack of general funds available to support program administration and oversight. At this point, our agency does not have the infrastructure or internal capacity to administer a local voucher program, and so additional funding is going to be required to build out the infrastructure necessary to really administer a program of this size. One consideration to take into account is that the administrative overhead required to operate a housing voucher program is essentially a fixed cost. You'll have the same number of staff required, whether you have Affordable Housing Trust Fund money for 15 households or 30, right? So if we are relying on Affordable Housing Trust Funds alone, the end result is that you'll have these fixed staffing costs, fixed admin overhead costs, and really the households who are served could potentially be drastically cut from year to year depending on the availability of funding. Such may be the nature of general funds as well. It's just something I would want to bring attention to and really do suggest that there are additional funding, especially general funding allocated to support this program as we move forward. The last really major concern about the bill is simply the hearing process as it's designed in the bill. I think it's very, very thoughtful, and it's very much laid out with due process in mind, and we all understand and recognize here, I think especially after our last bill and testimony, how important housing is as a right. I am, however, concerned about the structure of the hearing process and how it would be handled internally at this office. The way the bill is currently written, it says that the Executive Director or a delegated hearing officer would be responsible for overseeing that process. Having gone through law school myself and having read through the bill, I can safely tell you that as it's laid out, it would require somebody with a legal background in order to really do that. There are mentions of things like judicial notice and making a conclusion of law that isn't something that should be really casually assigned to whoever happens to have space on their plate at the agency. It should come with a qualified hearing officer who has a legal background in order to ensure that we're adequately protecting due process rights to anybody who's actually enrolled in this housing voucher program. Now, how, I can tell you for a fact that the Executive Director of Homeless Services is not an idle position. Our current director wakes up at 5:00 a.m. and she's working till 8:10. I've gotten emails at 3:00 in the morning. It's not something that could casually be undertaken by someone in that position. Not to mention with the exception of myself and Director Edwards, there's no one else at our agency that currently has a legal degree background. So the reality is additional funding is likely required to get a qualified hearing officer to make sure that that agreement, the termination process is being handled fairly and adequately. In closing, we really take no position on the bill. The agency very much supports the creation of a local housing voucher program. We recognize affordable housing is in short supply in Baltimore City, and every little bit helps. Just as currently proposed, there are a few ambiguities around the program operation and administration that should be resolved before the Housing Voucher Program bill can move forward. Thank you for your time.
Well, no, thank you for your time and your work, you know, in the office. And again, we know that this is not easy work. Again, given where we are in terms of, you know, the bill, and now we're going through a roll call. At this point, if there are potential amendments, those could be heard on the floor, the virtual floor as it were as far as the council in the next meeting. So thank you for raising those issues. So at this point, we will go ahead with the roll call vote as the bill has been moved and seconded.
Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
Chairman Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen votes aye. Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead?
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Mr. Chair, seven votes in affirmative, no negatives. We can move to second reader at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to commend Councilman Dorsey for his leadership on this issue. Again, we're moving in the right direction as a city. Thanks to the help of our council colleagues. We've done a great work today on the bills that we have been covering. So I know it's been a long day, it's been a long hearing. Again, I appreciate all the efforts, particularly I have to give a nod to our committee staff who's been here as long as I've been here and before. So again, and also my kids who are inside, you see them every now and again. So again, thank you, everybody, for your work today. That being the last issue before the council hearing in this committee, we will stand adjourned. So have a good evening. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.